Okay, why don't we get started? So, we want to pick up with our discussion of the departments under Business Services. So, Phil, you want to get us going again?
Sure. Good morning. Today, we have six more budgets for you to look at. The first one is, we're going to present to you what we commonly called PPO, Physical Plan Operations, used to be MNO. These folks have had the joy of having been organized and reorganized 13 times in the last four years. Other than that-
That would be the Phil Stover era.
Yeah, that would be. Yeah. We don't talk too much about that anymore. And so, we're going to start with Custodial. And that's always a point of interest for the Board. I ask you to keep in mind that we do, they're going to be presenting you the whole custodial operations budget, which is different than how Finance budgets the money for custodial. Finance splits it between the school sites and the custodial department. You're going to see it in its entirety here as it is managed and operated. And so, I'd ask you to keep that in mind. This is the entire custodial operation with the district. Drew?
If I can kick it off-
Please.
Gary spoke to you last week about food service. He's one of the members of Auxiliary Services, but we have the next five presentations in a row are the Auxiliary Services group. In total, we're about $200 million and 2,500 people or so. As Phil mentioned, this part, or the next three presentations you'll see are based on PPO. We have custodial, landscape, and then the maintenance component. If I could, I'd like to introduce the folks with me. Tom Wright and Ted Doughty are managers that are working and will present to you the maintenance presentation. And then, we have Jim Gonzalez and Greg Taylor, who are zone managers within PPO. So, they have a geographic responsibility across the district, but they also both have, they serve double duty. Jim is responsible for the overall landscape program. Greg is responsible for the overall custodial program within the district. So, they'll be talking to you today about their individual programs. I guess, before I hand it off to Greg, I'll just give you one last little plug. This is Greg's swan song. He retires in a few weeks after nearly 40 years with the district. So, congratulations to him.
We're all envious, Greg.
And with that, I'll turn it over to Greg, and we'll walk you through custodial, and then kind of come on down the line.
Okay.
Thank you. Good morning, Board members. Mr. Koba, Dr. Meyer, Mr. Stover. I've been trying to get away with this presenting to the Board for four decades now. Finally getting me weeks before. I think I have three more Mondays or, you know, three more Tuesdays after this, so it is helpful. So, I want to take a moment to go through these slides, but also give you some historical perspective on custodial services. And over basically the last four decades, and I know that isn't real important, but it is important to note that custodial services has managed significant cuts over the past, you know, more or less 30 years. Based on 1981, we took a 40% reduction when we went from everyday cleaning to all classrooms and services to every other day. And then, we've taken a minor little hits over the years until 2003, where we took a major cut back in 2003 and reduced significantly at that time and lost a lot of personnel. We also went through some changes with going from centralized, went from decentralized supervision to centralized, and then back to decentralized again. But the basic point is, and where we are today, is that we continue to make cuts, and I believe, I am so proud of the way custodial services has managed the reductions in services and still maintained our facilities at a high level with respect to supporting education and student needs. We have a load study that does staffing for us, and the staffing is even across the Board. And now, recently in 2008, we finally had to take a reduction that forced us to go to every third-day cleaning. That's a significant difference, and each time you cut something down, the savings becomes more minor. And so, if we cut even further than that, the savings would be minuscule for the services that we might neglect. And also, with that, the custodial services and the staffing we do, we do it by a formula base, which is pretty detailed, but it's very accurate. And so, our staffing across the Board is very fair and even to all sites. It's equitably done. It's fairly done. And right now, we're to every third-day cleaning. Along with that, custodial services in each classroom that they meet, and one of the, probably the only other person that visits a classroom outside of the teachers and students is the custodian. So, they have a direct connection to educational process. They are very close to the educational process and what they provide. The staffing and the workload that they do is very precise, down to the minute of what they have to clean, their responsibilities. In addition to that, they also provide services over and above that when the need is there, setting up for events, taking care of athletic events, setting up for PTA meetings, dealing with the public, dealing with teachers. And they also provide the ordering and delivering of supplies, books, materials, everything that supports teaching and learning, supports the staff. You know, a long time ago, and my mother, actually, she was the superintendent secretary for three years, years ago. Just slightly before that. Fortunately, she's passed away, but she provided me with an incentive of what we want to do is make the work environment for teachers as best we could and support them in a way that reduces their stress and they can focus on teaching and learning. And that's what our role is completely in custodial services, providing customer service for teachers, for staff members, and for parents in doing that. And most everywhere, that's very effectively done with this reduced staff. So, they're first on campus, they're last to leave, they provide that security. Two-thirds of that workforce is working at night, supporting the after-evening activities, trying to clean an environment that's supportive of education. We also have some supervision that's centralized. We have four supervisors, four, close to 600 employees across, two-thirds of them working nights. They work evenings as well. And they provide advisory authority to principals, to staff members, to custodians, in the direction they do, and they're invaluable in the service they provide for that, in giving advice not only to custodial staffs and supervisors, but also for administration and the things that they do. We've also had a, most recently, the last two years, we've had a dramatic cut in substitute reductions, which concerns me greatly, because one of the things we've had is that we've gone from five, six years ago, from $2.1 million, to the following year, $1.2, to the following year, $965,000, to now, the last two years, last year and this year, $159,000 for substitutes. The problem with that is it affects greatly services at sites when they have a long-term absence, because we're not able to provide them a substitute to help with those services. And that affects the entire custodial program, because they have to lessen what they do on a daily basis, reduce services so that they can get all the dailies done that are essential. You know, the restroom cleaning, the food services, and all those areas are vitally important, must be done, trash taken out. So, when we have those reductions, we don't have a substitute that can come in and take care of that in most of the cases. We have to make adjustments to provide services. They continue to do that all last year and did an excellent job of minimizing that. Unfortunately, that burden is elusive, and it isn't felt district-wide, because it may be at one school site for, like, an industrial accident for four to six months, where they're reduced for a whole custodian, maybe a third of their teaching, of their custodial staff, and then move to somewhere else. So, you know, it's not something that that burden is felt across the district, but it's certainly felt at those individual schools where that has an effect. We provide year-round cleaning. With the reduction in staffs, we find it more and more difficult to complete the, what we call the deep cleaning throughout the year, and when we do it during the break period. So, it's with the reduced staff, the same work is there. The cleaning of walls, furniture, windows, blinds, all those things is reduced significantly. And it's where we have to make an adjustment, either delay something where it's not done yearly, but every other year. But we've always made appropriate choices in that to reduce the impact of the cost, and we'll continue to do that. So, we've done that in, I think, a very effective way, but we're to the point where, you know, it's cutting down thin, and we're finding it more and more difficult. And we want to continue to serve the teaching staff. It is very important that classrooms have, they also do other things, you know, maintenance things, changing lights, keeping the grit and dirt away from kids' schools, taking the distractions away from them that enhance educational learning. So, on the budget side of it, you can see that where we were previously in '09, '10, we had, well, '08, I believe, we had 622 employees. We now have 593.5 throughout the district. So, as you can look at those budgets, they seem as if they're going up, but these actuals, and you'll probably hear this theme throughout this presentation, these are actuals of what we spent. So, we had some vacancies that we didn't get filled. Right now, we have close to 26 and 1/2 vacancies, which we hope to fill, but that's a savings to the district. And so, when it comes out to actuals, it reduces the budgeted amount needed for that staffing, and reflects in 2011, 2012, where it's the budgeted amount, not the actuals. I'm confident that at the end of the year, with nearly 600 employees, you're going to have vacancy transitions all the time. You're going to have people leave, and you're going to have some transitional time where you can't fill that vacancy. And so, therefore, there's a minor savings that goes along with that. So, the budget amount plus step increases and increases in fixed and variable benefits have an effect on looking at that. Custodial, so that's the budget portion of it. 93% of this is labor. We also manage a budget of $1.6 million for supplies, keeping critical needs of supplies for cleaning, for sanitation, things like that. Recently, we had a change in what we had to do in services because of an incident of MRSA just recently at a school. Along with that, all of a sudden, we really need to provide cleaning on a daily basis in those classrooms to ensure health. So, those are the adjustments that are made periodically at various different schools throughout the site. So, as you can see, the critical need of this, the 93%, is basically staffing, which is located at almost all the sites. Very little top-end staffing, just four custodial staff members throughout. Everybody else is at the site.
So, Greg, if I can point out, you know, a typical school site on the low end has two custodial staff assigned to it, one in the day, one at night. You get to a high school, they may have a staff of nine or 10. So, it's usually that range. We've worked real hard. We had, two years ago, we had sites that only had one and 1/2 bodies assigned to it, a full-time person in the day, half a body at night. That person would clean one school, take their dinner break, go work at another school. And we found it just wasn't very effective, particularly after school events. If you happen to be that school that got the second half of the night, was a real difficult problem. So, we were at a point where we have the minimum at two, which, again, has been successful. If you look at the budget slide, you'll see 71.5 personnel under other funds. That's a recent move we did. Those are funded, those are the custodians at redevelopment-funded schools, and Center City Development being really the pot with the money in it. So, where that school's in that boundary, the custodians are funded out of that pot. So, that's at least what that part is. As Greg mentioned, you know, we were at a peak in '07, '08 of 622. We're 29 personnel below that. That was that point when we made that transition from every other day cleaning to every third-day cleaning, and that's where we remain. That's in the classroom. Obviously, the sanitation issues, the restrooms, cafeteria areas, and trash service is done every single day still. But that classroom, as far as coming in and wiping it down, vacuuming, mopping the floor, whatever it may be, is on an every-third-day cycle on average across the district. So, I just wanted to jump in there.
One of the things on bumping those positions up, a half a position to a full position, was really for site needs of after-school activities, security. It was something that was really necessary and has been highly successful. Those schools are actually, because of that, a little bit increased staffing, they're able to clean more frequently than every third day, which is advantageous. But the disadvantage of having someone leave at 6:00, and the school not being supported for security and operational needs for activities was greatly needed. And the thing that's been done at many other school districts through the state and the United States has been done. As you can see on the third slide, we have approximately 14.8 million square feet, which we service and provide on a daily basis. The square footage that we look at in custodial comparisons are something that sometimes isn't universal across the district, because what we don't have on there are outside lunch areas, patios, outside walkways, that a lot of schools that are in the eastern area of the United States have all those internal. And so, those aren't mentioned in this. So, that changes the responsibility of the areas that custodial staffs are responsible through the entire campus, including outside litter, ground sweeping, and all those things also comes in. As I mentioned before, the safety, cleanliness, and security are the most important points, providing safe environment. Student and teacher services, again, mentioned just briefly before, is something that they do on a regular basis that's pulled themselves away, whether it's a teacher calling for support, you know, go back in my history, but a lot of people say the secretary, general secretary, and the BSS are the key people in the site that support the infrastructure for the activities that go on, and that's vitally true. The BSS and the secretary and the custodial staff that provide services to everybody, not just cleanliness, but go on from there. And to point out, just in case you weren't aware, that they do order and receive instructional supplies, they deliver them, they have services, they may have a supply room. They're working with those teachers and supplying the needs for them and letting them stay on focus for teaching and doing those services for them. So, another key link is the link to maintenance, in that they're looking at safety, they're calling in work orders, they're doing minor repairs themselves and taking care of the issues. And when there isn't, they call those things in and make sure that they are done appropriately and make the communication that's done. On the fourth slide, you can see what we're doing. Over the last three years or so, we've enhanced our training. We're providing a couple 12-week courses for custodial staffs. We're doing safety training. I think the Williams and Sark reports are reflective of the positive jobs that the BSS and custodial staffs have done. If you look at those reports, and they're very proud of those grades that they get, and they are focused on doing that. And I think that's an important attribute in why I'm proud of the services that we provide in custodial services because of those. They're very dedicated and want to serve. And so, along with that, the challenges that we have are dealing with that appropriately, with the reduced staff, the severe problems that when you don't have a custodian there, that cleaning every third day, you don't have a substitute, that means that those rooms may not be cleaned for more than a week or so. One of the things that, and just to share with you, I've been at school sites where they've had reductions, or they've had vacancies, and I've walked into buildings in the morning and afternoon, and I've seen students sweeping rooms, and teachers sweeping rooms, and cleaning and dumping trash when there's no custodial staff there. You know, that's a fine lesson occasionally, but certainly, you wouldn't want students and teachers cleaning classrooms when they should be dedicated of reading a book after school or before school, or working on some math or science. So, I think it's important that we still provide that, because it has a direct link to educational challenges that we have out there. So, the fifth slide gives more specifics on the four custodial supervisors. We have site supervisors that directly support or have supervisory responsibility at 59 sites with BSS3s and plan operations supervisors. We have 172, which are the BSSs, the site custodians that are there, crew leaders, 336 and 1/2 custodians throughout the schools at various different places. Many of them, some of them, we have about 40 that work at two different sites, that work four hours at one site and go to another. And then, we have 21 relief custodians, which are, provide substitute services, but when you have maybe a need for 80, 21 doesn't quite make it. The 159,000 would be reflective of about four and 1/2 to five substitutes a day is all, when we have a need for probably close to 80 substitutes a day on a regular basis. And we have one clerical support. You can see, and I alluded to this earlier, the great Council of Great City Schools has the medium of 27.4, and we're right now at 26.2. It may be a little bit higher than that. We've been increasing about 1,000 square feet per year for the last two to three years, and obviously, a long time before that more. Again, those comparisons are across the United States, and I don't think are, I think when you look at specifics, you'll find that compared to eastern schools with a lot of interior areas, our area is probably greater than the medium. It looks, it appears as if we're at medium, but I don't believe we are. I believe we're a little higher than that.
If I could point out, with regards to the Council of Great City Schools metrics, it's interesting, we've always been above the metric. I think this is the first year where you see us slightly below the metric. I think it's probably a sign of the times that districts across the country have been, you know, that capacity has just been stretched and stretched. Just to point out, that is, I noticed our typo there, that is thousands of square feet per custodian.
That metric, yeah. Thousands. Yeah, yeah, yeah. All day. That metric is, it's not an analysis of need, it's just sort of a comparison of-
Correct. It is the Council of Great City Schools metric. It's based actually on '09, '10 actual data. Again, comparison across the country, and there obviously are differences that aren't accounted for. Also, I'd like to point out, as Phil mentioned, you know, we've been through reorganizations along the way. Had you looked at this staffing two, three years ago, you would have seen a manager of custodial services. That position has come and gone. You would have seen, after the manager, you would have seen a custodial operations program supervisor. That position has come and gone. So, we're pretty lean and mean. Those four custodial services supervisors work across the district. They are the district's supervisory eyes and ears at night. They run the entire custodial crew during the summer when the principal is not there. So, they're a valuable, valuable asset. And again, you can see the scale and size of the program that they are supporting. So, didn't mean to-
Before you move on, I think, to carry that conversation down another level, site supervisors and crew leaders, BSSs, those are all working personnel, not office-oriented managers.
Correct.
I know the title's sometimes misleading, you need to show that or point that out to the Board.
The site supervisory personnel, that line of 59, are actually ASD bargaining unit members. They have true supervisory responsibility. When you get below, and they're obviously at our larger sites. Rich Sheldon here, for example, is a POS. He is one of those. When you get below that group, and the crew leader, BSS1 and 2, they are more of a foreman type. They are within the OSS bargaining unit, and obviously, all those guys are working very hard.
To clarify on that, the BSS1s, crews, and crew leaders are probably 85% of the day are tasks that we have, that are duties that are assigned with specific timelines on it, cleaning the lunch order hour, or cleaning the cafeterias, dumping trash, doing security. All those aspects are incorporated within that. Even the BSS3s probably are close to 75 to 80% of their workday is doing specific tasks, providing cleaning services throughout. The POS even probably does, close to 50% of their day are duties that they need to get out and actual hands-on work. So, they're part of the labor force that provides services. You know, I've been, you know that I've been doing this for a long time, and I have tremendous compassion and pride in the efforts that our custodial staff has done. I think they deserve a rich, rich pat on the back for the services that they provide. Obviously, there are some problems out there at various different schools, but I've seen when we went to site-based decision-making, some decisions were made to get rid of some of those positions, and it hurt. We had positions that currently are being hurt, that you could talk to someone like a Diane Ryan or Heidi Eastcott and know how much it affects the site and how strong custodial services provide. I'm just very proud of the services that we've been able to provide, how we've structured it, and continuing success with reduced levels of staffing. And so, I just wanted you to all be aware that, you know, we're staying true to providing the best support we can for all of you. Thank you.
We've got a couple of speakers on custodians, and then I'm sure Board members have some questions. So, Lance Wren, and then Dan Ortiz, I don't know if you wanted to speak specifically to custodians.
Good afternoon, Board members and staff, and congratulations, Greg, on your retirement. I've known Greg about 25 years, and good luck on your retirement. Fact is, is that according to Portland Group report, a few years ago, we did a survey of where we are with staffing levels at the schools. And under Phil Stover's direction, we sent out three custodians to go out and survey all the school sites. And they went out, and the fact is, is they found out that we were 215 custodians short district-wide. That means that the group that we have left are doing more work with less, you know, time to do it in. And that is a very serious problem. Mentioned just a few minutes ago about the split sites. Well, we've worked real hard, former Labor rep and myself, and we really wanted to get a full-time person at night and a full-time person in the daytime. We worked real hard, got an agreement to do that. The very next thing that happened right after that was that we had six vacancies. So, school board looking for money, took those vacancies. So, then, we had to adjust in other places. Those schools got to keep those sites, but then you hammer down on a high school, because you have more staff members at a high school. So, all of a sudden, you've got a situation like you have at Morris High School, where maybe at an elementary school, we might be at 22,000 square feet to clean. But at Morris High School, we're talking into 30,000s. You imagine a custodian trying to dump the trash, trying to close and secure a school, walking over 30,000 square feet every single night. I mean, I'm talking about cleaning a classroom, because they only clean at that school once a week. I'm talking about just dumping the trash. How much trash at a high school, when you're covering 30, and I think it's somewhere more around, and Greg may correct me, but it may be up 36,000 square feet for a custodian to travel in an evening? That's a long distance. Right now, we're at 30 vacancies in custodial. So, my fear is that you guys are broke, and that you're going to sweep those 30 custodians up. That would be a very, very severe problem for custodial, because you have no substitutes. You went from two-point, what, you went from a couple million dollars in substitutes down to, you know, 700,000 this year. So, you won't have anybody to clean those classrooms. That means we're going to have to readjust, and that person's going to have to walk 40 to 42,000 square feet. That, you know, what's going to happen is that people are going to be able to come in and claim Williams Settlement, you know, claims against the district. That's what they're going to be able to do, because at schools where there are guys walking 40,000, how's he going to clean that bathroom? How is he going to be able to do those things? How is he going to be able to do those things? You know, 221 custodians is what we're at today. That's how many we're short today. And that is a very large number of custodians, of shortage in custodial. So I urge you to please at least keep the staffing levels where they are for custodial, because we can't take any more cuts. Greg just spent 10 minutes telling you that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Lance. Dan, did you want to speak now, or do you want to do a little bit later?
I'll go general later.
Okay, okay. Okay, so Scott, do you want to start with your questions?
Just one interesting question that you might look into on the matrix of the Great City Schools, and is obviously if we are cleaning less days, the question is whether they are cleaning full days or not. So then you'd have a more accurate comparison, because I assume different districts do different things as far as that goes.
Yeah, there's, we're doing, we've reduced the frequency, but are doing full scope dusting, spot cleaning, everything. So some school districts have chosen just to do essentially trash and clean the floor. So it's hard to get the specifics from that, but it's worth noting if we can.
You mentioned the, and Mr. Wren referred to as well, the relief custodians or subs. Is that the same term? Relief, is that different?
No, it is different. With substitute custodians or hourly personnel, the relief custodians are kind of a hybrid custodian. They, a lot of times will fill in for a BSS, have a little bit more expertise. It's actually a promotion from a custodian to a relief custodian. But they're assigned every day as a regular salaried employee, but may go from site to site each and every day. A lot of times, they're consistently at one site. And we rely upon them heavily to fill in for BSSs, and when there's absences and the evening staff can't support that.
So you, okay, and just to make sure I'm clear, how many subs do you, we have now, and how many, you said you needed 80 a day, I thought?
I would say, well, I tell you, we don't need that, because we're being responsible to the budget of 159,000. We also use some other funding in the redevelopment areas to support that. I would say, when I said 80, if we were going to substitute for every absence at every school, we'd need 80 to 85 assignments on a daily basis. We're not doing that. We don't substitute in larger schools, because we only have about five additional positions to do that across the entire district. So it's kind of, we try and balance that where we're sending them to mostly elementary schools that only have one or one and a half custodians. That's where most of our assignments go, and the others do without.
On any given day, the absentee rate, for a variety of reasons, is probably on the order of about 12% of the custodial staff. That can be sick, jury duty, bereavement, industrial accident, et cetera, et cetera. There's a lot of, there's a lot of, there's a lot of reasons for those absences. But as Greg stated, we don't have the ability to cover every one of those absences every single day.
Based on what I heard from the audience, is furloughs, are they counted as absences?
No, we're, no, it's basically the furloughs are taken during non-student attendance days. So what it does is reduces your opportunity to continue with the deep cleaning. It takes another five days away from the services of doing deep cleaning. So there is an effect, but it's, it sometimes isn't as visual as the impact.
And just to clarify real quickly on the relief custodian, the relief custodian is paid a premium above a custodian, because their schedule can vary. They can work tonight, and also be assigned a job tomorrow morning, this end of the district to that end of the district. They also have a greater responsibility. They're the ones that could carry the keys, to lock up the site, turn on the alarm, and go home. The hourly or substitute custodian is typically entry-level, do the cleaning work, and doesn't carry those same responsibilities. So that's the distinction.
So, okay, it just, you said about 12% is average, but if we're talking about 80 a day, that seems higher than that.
Yeah, that's true, and it varies. You know, Mondays and Fridays are sometimes harder than other days, you know, there's variations along the course of the year.
Can I also point out that we're also talking about, we have, you know, probably, if we were filling positions on a regular basis, we probably have about 10 to 15 vacancies on a daily basis. So there's those positions right there that would be vacant positions that we'd be filling.
Okay, I'm just trying to get a handle of all the moving parts here, and so the relief custodian, for instance, last night I was at Point Loma till 9:30. Is that the person who would be closing the school? Would that be a relief custodian? Would that be their regular schedule?
Be their regular at Point Loma, they had to have a senior crew leader, which is on that BSS 1 and 2 level.
Yeah, actually, I'm sorry, it was a career.
So no, wouldn't be, wouldn't be the relief custodian or substitute, although they may have, well, most likely at high schools, they have personnel that can take the place of those personnel when they're missing. And so that's done within internal, and then, but that site probably, if they had an absence, probably didn't get covered last night.
So if you have a night event that is concurrent with a custodian being there, then that custodian would handle that event, as opposed to them needing overtime?
Right.
Although it could be, in some cases, a relief custodian, but it-
Relief custodian is only going to be there if there's an absence, and then not a one-for-one.
Just to clarify, those activities that they do are over and above their to-the-minute workload study, which has assignments all the way up to 480 minutes a day. So it's, every time there's some event scheduled, that takes time away to take care of that.
And the issue of the study that was done a couple of years ago, that Mr. Wren referred to, of having a, needing a net increase of some 200 more, is that based on a 593 number? So ideally, to manage the sites, to clean them every day and meet our requirements, that mean we would need almost 800? Or is that-
Yes, but that would be going back to every other day. And the study also looked at increasing staffing on site specifics that had greater impacts for that site specifically, like vandalism, higher vandalism, more activities, things like that. That also included consideration, which is not considered currently right now. It's strictly on basically square footage and cleaning aspects, and student population and staff.
Do you have any vehicles or that you, like maintenance does, that are part of custodial?
Now, we have the four evening custodial services supervisors, or each have a van, and they provide assistance with repaired equipment, bringing in equipment, delivering centralized supplies that they may need to, to provide equipment when theirs is broken and down, so.
And right now, there are 30, well, I heard 30 vacancies and I heard 15. How many vacancies are there?
26 and a half, I believe.
Just today?
Yes.
Okay. So they're budgeted unfilled?
That's a flexible, I mean, that's a moving target.
They're budgeted unfilled, is what you mean?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And small thing, just so I can be consistent, the numbers in the budget, public budget for staffing is different than the budgeted numbers we have here by a few, so, and I don't know what the dollar amounts are in the budget, because I don't see them broken down, so anyhow, thank you very much.
Well, just like a lot of areas we've looked at, I mean, it certainly looks extremely difficult in cutting in an area that's already so cut to the bone. So the things I'm asking are, I think we just need to be aware of, if there are cuts, you know, what would the impact be? And so, for example, and I'm not in any way proposing this, I just want us to know the reality, like if we're cleaning every third day, if we were absurd and went to cleaning, you know, half as often every six days, even putting aside the impossibility of doing that and the effect on health and safety and so forth, you talked about there's such minimal savings anyway.
Well, it's like anything else, you know, what I was referring to is if you cut something in half, which is why we almost did in '81, we lost 40%, now when you cut that, now 60% in half, again, you know, you have a smaller and smaller savings amount and a greater impact. So if we're reducing custodial staffs at, you know, twice as much, you're, the savings, you know, normally, if we were basically pre-'81, we'd have, we'd have 1,200 or 1,300 custodial staff right now, you know, because we've increased in square footage by probably a million and a half square feet or 2 million over those, over those three decades. So that's what I'm referring to. Each time you cut that, your savings is less and less. Whereas 40% in '81, when we made major cuts in '03, it was probably 15% when we went from every other day to every third day in '06.
I think, like you're mentioning, if you were to double the frequency of the cleaning, that is just one component of the cleaning, and that's where you, you know, double the frequency, it wouldn't give you a proportional savings of 50%.
Right.
Because you still have to do the everyday restroom, trash, and all that, so that you're just, you're really working on the marginal piece of it at this point.
Right, and I think what, and the reason I'm asking this, I don't think people even realize that we've gone to every third-day cleaning. I mean, so when people say cut back on custodial, I mean, we've already done that. And then another question is, I'm assuming that the breakfast in the classroom has added to the custodial responsibilities, and we put that there, well, for, you know, for nutritional and educational reasons, is important to the academic program, but that wasn't there before for the custodial staff, and that seems to me that's a huge factor.
And not only it is a huge factor, we've talked to Gary Patel about this, the classroom cleaning, the spills on carpets, the pest, all that. Although I'm, you know, some support it, because it seems like the program has been very effective for students, there is an impact. And so what I was hoping to get some support either from food service workers, because at an average for the BSS, who doesn't have a lot of time, it probably takes them an additional 30 to 45 minutes to deal with that, even though they have kids taking the trash and that sort of thing. It has a direct impact on the supervisor in the morning, which takes away from other aspects of their job, and they either have to defer that on to the evening custodians or something that gets deferred and done less frequency. So definitely an impact. I'd like to see more support, Drew may be cringing, but-
Right, well, I mean-
-from food services directly, you know. The same with the food services program with lunch, you know, we deal with, we clean those dining rooms and do that as well. It's a, it's a big impact.
I mean, I'm very supportive of the program, it's just I think we need to recognize that one of the costs of the program, besides the food and other things, is increased custodial responsibilities.
Well, the question is, what we talked about in food services yesterday, legitimate reimbursements to the general fund, whether or not this would be covered, and whether we could increase revenues to cover that if necessary?
Probably the biggest reimbursement to the general fund is custodial effort. Unfortunately, you know, it's really used to offset the general fund obligation to custodial. So the general fund payment to custodial has been reduced by that. The custodial staffing has not been correspondingly increased.
Right. And then, just one other, I just wanted to, what Scott was saying about the substitutes just sounded a little high, and, you know, obviously, we're going for, trying to go for, you know, 96, 97, 98% on student attendance. And one of the thoughts that would occur to me is, I'm wondering if, and I don't know what to compare it to, but I'm wondering if the very difficult working conditions are actually contributing to increased absences.
Yeah, we have a higher industrial accident property level. It's a very labor-intensive physical job. They're moving almost constantly. They're doing heavy lifting, you know, frequently, lifting into heavy, into dumpsters, water waste, different things like that. So it's a physically taxing job, and we do the best we can with training, but I would say that in that industry, you're probably going to find a higher level of industrial accidents like you may, and may find in other labor-intensive jobs, you know, like a bricklayer or something like that. They're lifting a lot of weight on a regular basis, and so that has an effect.
I mean, so the decreased staff could also, we were talking last week about workers' compensation. We could actually be increasing our workers' comp expenses.
You know, we haven't seen that in rates. I don't believe we've seen that over the decades, that we're, I think our rates are still pretty good, as far as what we're paying for that. We haven't seen, you know, although it is frequent, and it occurs, we have a lot of back injuries, a lot of shoulder injuries, things like that. But I don't believe that our rates have gone up because of those accidents within custodial services.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, just a few questions. I mean, give us a, you know, what are the impacts on classrooms and on schools, moving from the every other day to every third day, regular cleaning, and also the reduction in deep cleaning? How does, so give us some examples of-
Well, you know, the classroom's dirty, you know, two to three times, and when we have an absence, sometimes it's a weekly basis. You know, I think it also has an effect on being able to take care of repairs and changing lights and things like that, that have an effect. The effect on deep cleaning is a reduced amount, but the, it has, you know, effect on education, definitely. And it, the biggest thing that I have concerns with and would like to increase is the custodial support, because, I mean, I'm sorry, the substitute support, because when we have an absence, that room doesn't even get cleaned every third day. Now it's once a week, and if the person continues to be absent, depending on whether they burden the entire school or just that one beat, you know, it has, and then there's the sanitation issue. The dailies are already done, are done on a regular basis. So the fact is, is that what used to be every other day was probably about 35 to 40% were dailies. Right now, the daily responsibility is over 50% of their, of their day on a regular basis, greater. So the one third-day cleaning, you know, you still have, because you have less custodians there, the dailies are done are a higher impact on the percentage of their total work. I'm not sure I answered your question.
No, no, that's, and the breakfast in the classroom is a good example as well, but at what point is, so we've gone from, you know, 2.1 million to $160,000 annual budget for substitutes. At what point is there a trade-off between we want more money for substitutes versus we just want to hire more full-time people?
And that's, and that's how we got into this situation. You know, we were facing a cut two years ago.
Yeah.
And we made the decision to offer up our substitute budget, as opposed to offering up vacancies and permanent employees.
Yeah.
So, you know, we figured it was better to have that position in place than relying on a substitute.
Yeah.
So it's a tough call, you know, you can look at the number of relief custodians. One of the, when we talk about going from down 30 positions, a lot of those positions were relief custodians. So we've really compressed and compressed along the way. You know, it's a balancing act, and I don't know, Greg, if you can speak more to that.
The relief custodians and the decline on the relief custodians directly supported the seven sites that we needed that extra half a position to. So most of the loss in relief positions was traded towards that. The board's decision on, you know, do you cut, you know, 10 to 20 custodians, full-time custodians, or the hourly budget was the decision. I would like to say that, of course, I don't want any reductions, because I think we're already to the minimum level. I think we should maintain this level and be supportive of, and not go any lower than we are right now. But I strongly encourage, if there are funds available, and the 2.1 million, when we had the 2.1 million, we provided a substitute every time there was an absence, and only when there was an absence. That wasn't extra. We just, when there was an absence, we provided every school for every position. When it went to, you know, just under a million dollars, we were providing a substitute for every custodian in elementary schools, there was an absence. Middle schools, we didn't provide that until the third day of an absence. And in high schools, we didn't provide it until the fourth day of an absence. in high schools, we didn't provide it until the fourth day of an absence. So that, that site who had eight or nine custodians could, could manage that, but not when you only have one custodian a night or two custodians a night, where fifty percent of the, of the custodial staff. So, you know, I would encourage the board to consider increasing that back up to close to a million without any reductions in, in positions, I, I think, and not only in the relief positions, but in the regular custodial positions. You know, I know it's not a budgetary time to do that, and, and the, to speak on the supply budget, it's just about right, and, you know, it gets down to, we're not, if you look at the orders, there is no frivolous orders, you know, we're piling toilet paper and paper towels and soap, you know, those are absolute necessities that we have to have, and the other cleaning products are provide sanitation that, that we're obligated to, so.
The, the current twenty-six and a half unfilled vacancies, are we not filling those vacancies because we're trying to save money? Or are we not filling those vacancies because at any given time, there's ten or fifteen vacancies, and, I mean, what, you know?
There, there is a, kind of a normal transition. We do, unlike a vacancy within PPO where we determine and hire, it is, it also, it is a dialogue with the school site, that typically the school site is typically, is involved in the hiring process, so that lengthens that time. But generally, and, and we, you know, we take them all to fill, but we, we generally have the support to backfill the position, it's just the cycle of going through.
So we're currently trying to fill all of those vacancies?
Right, right.
That's about a five percent vacancy, which is very typical. You can never, I don't think you can just logistically get below that.
Yeah, okay.
Just because people come and go and come and go.
Okay. And what's the, just, what's the average salary and salary range of custodians?
Total, for, for, you know, the total custodians, about fifty-two thousand.
Fifty-two thousand, but with benefits.
For, for custodial position.
With, with benefits.
Yeah, yeah, fifty-two thousand, okay. Okay, okay, thanks. Thank you, Greg, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
If I could have just delayed this a little bit more.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, yeah.
Richard, if I could, just to confirm, when we talk about custodial funding, for the board's sake and the community, where is the funding allocated? Is it in a school budget, is it in a quote "central office" budget such that we can sort it all out?
It's, it's an all of the above. It is actually managed in three different resources. What we provide, how it works is we provide the asset to the school. We, we tell school X, we're going to give you a custodial staffing of three. That's below the line in their budget. They can't, and the experience with the district a few years ago was, hey, I'm going to cash in a custodian because I want another clerk or something. So as we have it structured now, we control, no, you have three custodial positions, those are our positions, but it's, it's in the school's budget, below the line, and so it follows that budget, or that school's department budget, if you will. What we presented to you here today, the relief custodians, for example, the custodial, those four custodial supervisors are in the PPO custodial budget. What we presented today is the combination of all that.
Every year.
So it's the entire program across the district, and to really accurately track it, we have to follow the resource codes of zero, zero, thirty-one, thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two, which brings all those assets together.
You will never see the custodial budget as you've, let me rephrase that. We're working to get you to be able to see the custodial budget as you saw it today.
Today, yeah.
Typically, though, that is not how it is presented. All those, those five-hundred-and-some custodians are hidden in the school district budget, in the school's budget, but we're working to align the budgets more with operations.
Okay. Okay, well, thanks again, Greg. We've got an hour to go today. I mean, I actually think this level of discussion is very important, so, you know, we do what we can on time, but it just might be that we don't get through everybody today.
Quite on the ten-minute track.
Yeah, right, yeah. But Jimmy will.
I've been instructed to make it that, so I gotta watch out, so. Where are we? Yep. Good morning, board members, Mr. Kova, Dr. Meyer, and Mr. Stover. For our schools, our first impressions are made at the curb, and for our students, those impressions are reinforced as they make their way to their classrooms. I think we all know that there are numerous studies that, that affirm a link between the physical environment and student achievement, and as a district, it's clearly obvious to all of us that we are, we take a lot of pride in the appearance of our campuses, and we, and we all recognize that link between healthy environment and student achievement. The physical appearance greatly affects the district image, and so our communities, our parents, our students expect the campus to be pleasing, inviting, and available. District's landscape department is responsible to keep that image up. Over the past few years, one challenge to maintaining that image has been sustaining staff levels. This year, we've been reduced by ten positions, and last, or in two thousand eight, nine, we, we've been reduced by eight. But historically, in two thousand one, two thousand two, so approximately ten years ago, the landscape department was at one hundred and thirty-eight employees. By two thousand three, two thousand four, that number had dropped to twenty-five. During that era, I think we all remember that our sites were in a crisis, and that crisis was in the landscaping. That landscaping crisis, that image, or damaged our image, and we had a lot of people, a lot of complaints, a lot of constituents who were concerned about that image. We began to rebuild when we came out of that, that era in two thousand seven, two thousand eight. We actually hit a high of a hundred and twenty-two landscapers. Consequently, we saw a reduction in a lot of those concerns. Landscape was reorganized into the zone configuration, which gave us a, a better connection with those, with the sites. But again, no one could foresee, no one had a crystal ball that things would sort of turn, the pendulum would swing on us again. So in two thousand ten, as I said, we were down to a hundred and eight, and today, this fiscal year, we're going to have ninety-eight people deployed across the district. Like I said, the schools are often judged by the condition of the landscape, and moving into the zones has helped us, helped landscape become better connected with the sites, the condition at those sites. One thing that has been very positive in our response to the sites was the ability to field, by moving into the zone configuration, having four zones, we broke each zone up into three operational areas, and we were able to put a lead landscape technician and a crew into each one of those operational areas and give them the responsibility for the condition of those school sites. So our leads and our supervisors worked very closely at monitoring the condition within each operational area and being able to deploy the crews as appropriate skill set, skill level. Each one of our schools are very unique in its landscaping configuration. Each of our schools are in a very unique microclimate, from the beach to East San Diego, we have vast differences in what, what we're trying to deal with. Being able to have a, a, a lead and his crew deployed in that operational, to be able to assess the, the conditions, to be able to address the conditions, being able to assign staff appropriately to each site to address the conditions, and then being able to move on, has been very helpful, and that connection has been established between the school site, maintenance, custodial, and the site principal, because of the zone configuration making that possible. So the landscaping that we have represents an investment, an investment of capital by the district. That capital ultimately creates wealth for the district in a way that it's a public asset and it's worth preservation. There are a lot of educational options that have, that are, that our parents, available that our parents consider, and so a lot of our schools find themselves thrust in sort of a competitive atmosphere with private schools, charter schools, and even with the neighborhood school that's nearby. Part of that competition, we all feel the need to measure up, and it's no wonder that the condition of our landscape has become so emotionally charged lately. School sites, school principals see that, that, that curb appeal, that first impression as a make or break to get that parent to decide, we're coming to Fulton, we're coming to Adams, we're coming to Angier, because of the school sites bring, the landscaping is bringing them in. We've been able to establish that, that feeling with our landscapers because, again, they're at the skites, they're in the site level, and they're also working in that operational zone, so they sort of feel that connection. You can see on the slide that a majority of our landscapers are funded out of the property management and the redevelopment funds, and that those funds are represented there at the bottom of the, of the chart. We've also been able to, you'll see some vacancy savings up there, some of those vacancy savings obviously relate to having the vacancies available for savings in salary and a savings in benefits. So that's where you see some of the difference up there. So landscape, all, all school sites, administrative sites and vacant lots require some portion of landscape care, so we are currently caring for thirty-two hundred acres of district So what we do, obviously, we provide a environment, safe and inviting environment for our students and our parents, and we make that property available for rentals, there's athletic schedules that we must meet, occupancy levels, we have to make sure that instructional areas for physical education athletics are available to the school site during the day. All those things are evaluated by our, by our staff at the, at the staff, at the site level. We address mowing, edging, trimming at the curb, we do a lot of fertilizing and reseeding, we do a lot of athletic area rebuilding, a lot of irrigation issues to be addressed. We meet those community expectations, and I think all of us have seen with the recent weather last year, a, a big uptick in weed infestations and a lot of pest control issues because of the weather. We've had a couple of wet winters, and so that equates into an immediate response with, we have a lot of weeds, a lot of overgrown areas. So some of the pluses that we can see and how we're doing, landscape, again, has been in a rebuilding phase since two thousand nine. We restructured ourselves into the zone configuration, which was a great help. That helped us break down operational barriers between custodial and maintenance, have the ability to drive change and build a better connection at the school site. We went into two thousand eleven school year, two thousand ten, eleven school year, setting some goals in areas where we had the greatest impact on landscape condition. One goal is the way we train our people, and one, one very, very proud of one team we put together, who put together a all-day, multi-discipline training fair in the, in the irrigation field. We, we leveraged a lot of partnering opportunities with local suppliers who supply, currently supply us through strategic sourcing, and they came down and they trained our staff in about seven or eight different modules in the landscape, in the irrigation field. A second team looked at updating our power equipment training, and during the training, they actually developed a procedure for identifying and evaluating and triaging each piece of equipment in the landscape department that owns, so that we now know the condition of each and every piece of equipment, and we were able to put together a replacement plan based on condition and use. So a couple of big pluses there. Current effects of the economic crisis has been such that we have not been able to replace staff vacancies, there's been a hiring freeze, that has forced us to make adjustments and to prioritize locations at many sites. With that, not being able to maintain staff levels at an adequate level, I feel that we have trouble consisting, or providing a site-wide consistency. We, we, we are forced to prioritize certain areas of the campus much lower than we do the front of the school, for, for instance. We, we work a lot on curb appeal, we work a lot on athletic availability, which oftentimes gives us, well, actually has, we need to prioritize down areas like vacant lots or DG areas that are not used regularly for PE, or banks and slopes that get prioritized down. So you see the condition in that, they start to get weedy, they start to get woody. But we're trying our best to avoid deterioration of the landscape asset that's out there. So while we may not be focusing on the unimproved parts of the campus, we're trying to really drill back down to where we've made that investment in, in plant life. How we compare, you can see that we have four landscape supervisors, one for each zone, we have twelve landscape technicians, I'm sorry, lead landscape technicians. The supervisors and leads travel throughout their region, reviewing work being performed by crew members, they conduct inspections and plan and schedule rehabilitation projects. They oversee a lot of the landscape maintenance needs at each of their assigned schools, and they work with the supervisor, well, the supervisors and lead work together to deploy the correct person to the, to condition that we're trying to improve.
Jim, in this, in these job descriptions, you mentioned a crew leader. Who's the crew leader?
Well, and this would be the lead landscape technician, who is the crew leader.
And again, that's a working-level lead.
Yeah, and he's a working-level person.
And if I can, much like in custodial, again, at one point, there was a landscape manager, went away, there was a landscape operations program supervisor, again, come and gone. We're, we're pretty lean when you look at that level of the organization.
So with eighty-two, if you look at this, with eighty-two landscapers on the ground, just dedicated to taking care of site conditions, we're at a thirty-nine to one acreage to FTE ratio. The medium for the American school and university metrics is thirty-one, we're at thirty-nine. I believe, I think over the next few years, delivering our services will continue to be a challenge, and I am afraid that we will begin to see some symptoms of that in our, in the appearance of our schools. But rest assured, there are a lot of dedicated landscape staff, men and women, who are performing a really tough job every day. If there are any questions, I'm-
Right, thanks, thanks.
-trying to stay true to our schedule.
Yeah, that's appreciated. So let's call James Comstock, who wants to speak specifically to our landscapers.
While the gentleman's coming, I want to point out that Jim is the only person that followed my directions clearly and included a poem, some piece from literature in his, in his report. Thank you, Jim.
Yes, Mr. Comstock.
Hi, I'm the VP of Landscape, I'm also the gardener at Point Loma High School, and to make a long story short, my gardeners are working themselves to death. It's almost an exercise in futility with the numbers we currently have. Working in the field, we, we have, with two-hundred-plus schools and less than seventy gardeners at hand, we're, and I'm counting, there, there are guys out on disability, okay? The numbers you are seeing is not the total workforce. Okay, the numbers you are seeing is not the total workforce that's in the field. We're facing an uphill battle every day. We go to work, and it's getting worse all the time, you know, as guys retire or are eliminated for other reasons such as medical or natural causes. Some are quitting, some are transferring to other departments because they are so poorly paid and overworked. I take home $2,150 a month. And I would challenge anybody to try to pay the rent and make a living on that. And I've been in the hospital many times over this job. Our tool situation isn't much better. We're forced to work with antiquated weed whips and blowers that have to be constantly rotated through the repair shop as they break down. Fighting with these old machines on a daily basis is also very hard on our bodies. I can testify to that because I just went through shoulder surgery myself. I have trouble sleeping every night because of it. We need to hire more gardeners instead of laying them off. We lost 10 guys, you know, that have been eliminated, that we desperately needed to fill those positions. Jimmy told you, we should be up at like 125 or whatever. Even if we would have filled those 10 positions, it would have been like a finger in the dyke. It wouldn't have been enough. It just wouldn't. We really need around 50 more guys to make the landscape run efficiently and stop the wear and tear on our bodies. Landscape is, always has been the most depleted division in the district. And it's always the first on the hit list when we run out of money. Nobody seems to be able to figure that one out. Morale is about as low as it can get, as gardeners and their families have to constantly worry about getting laid off and ending up on unemployment in a job market that has no jobs. And a lot of these guys are older. I'm no spring chicken. I'd hate to be out looking for a job right now. This would also be a giant burden to the taxpayers of the state if this continues to happen statewide. We've lost 10 positions that we really needed to fill once again, you know, while we're trying to take care of an enormous amount of acreage with less than 50% of our staff. We need your help. And that's about all I have to say.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Comstock.
You're welcome.
Okay, John, do you want to start?
Yeah, well, and once again, we're facing something that seems to be going right to the bone. And I certainly agree about the comments about really the marketing of our neighborhood schools and how are we going to do that if we don't, if we don't pay attention to curb appeal. I mean, I have heard in the past years, you know, someone said, "I would never send a kid to the school in my neighborhood simply based on the way that it looks." So that's really important. When things, this is just kind of a general comment, when things are broken down between the general fund unrestricted and other funds, we still need to kind of have information overall from the staff in terms of, even if it does come from other funds, what are the options in terms of using those other funds? So that we don't just kind of dismiss it and say, "Well, we can't touch that because it's not out of the general fund, unrestricted fund anyway." We need to kind of know what are the options in terms of using those funds. I guess for the whole truth and making decisions thing, I mean, I could see pretty much how, if we have 98, that I would have come up with, I remember myself, that Mr. Comstock said, about 50 more to really enhance our landscaping and, you know, do a good job with it. What might be helpful would be to have sort of a breakdown of what we get for each level. You know, I mean, in terms of what does it mean in a specific sort of sense? I mean, we've kind of talked about that in terms of when we've gone from cleaning every other day to cleaning every third day, what is the effect? If we were to say, what would our schools look like with the landscaping, if we had 150? What does it look like now with 100? And then going down from there, you know, it's ranged from 25 to 138. And at each level, just to have a clear description, even including the 25, exactly what happened and what did it look like, what would it be like with 75? Because as we're looking at taxpayer money, we have to decide what we're buying out of the different pots of money. And I think that we just need to be aware. I don't have, you know, I can see the metrics and so forth, and we're certainly cutting to the bone. But at least to know, this is what it will look like overall with 150, and this is what it would look like overall with 50 and so forth. So that would be helpful. Thanks.
I agree with you that a lot of the metrics speak to a quantitative level, but it's very difficult to find a qualitative, you know, at what level do you, we know that there was a metric up there of 40 to 1 or 30 to 1. But what does that mean in reality of site condition? And then as the economy gets worse, we see those numbers ticking up. 39 to 1, 49 to 1. I've actually seen areas where it's been much higher. But there's no reference point of what do those places look like? How little is that being cared for that it's completely out of control? And you've got to remember that, and I try to keep this perspective in my mind while trying to make decisions. A landscape is really a wild animal. It is an exotic pet that if you don't, it requires water, food, care, and rest. If you don't give, those are all a definition of an exotic pet that we're caring for. And we just can't leave it on its own, or it'll go feral on us. And the next thing you know, we'll have not just a pet, but a wild animal to deal with. And then you never stick the lion tamer in with a wild cat.
Well, I don't know if there's a way to kind of, I know it's qualitatively, but visually do it. I mean, certainly pictures of what some of the schools looked like, we must have some of those around, you know, when they were at 25, pictures of what schools have looked like when they were 138, and then some sort of description, kind of like with the custodial, this is what has happened. We'll be able to, you know, keep the trees alive, but the yard will just be ignored, or whatever it is.
The revenues besides redevelopment, is it from lease revenues?
The other funds, there's two key components, redevelopment funds and property management funds.
So property management's the lease revenues?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's, both of these last two presentations have obviously been rather sobering, to say the least. So I don't have any more questions at the moment.
Okay, just similar questions with, I have with custodial. So that, how many current vacancies do we have that are vacancies in budgeted positions?
Perhaps two.
Two, okay. So again, I think you were talking about a couple of years ago when we, the hiring freeze basically stopped hiring to vacancies, but we don't have that in place right now. So I just want to make sure that if we've got vacancies, we're trying to fill them, that we understand that there's not a hiring freeze in place right now to fill our vacancies.
And I think one of the things we were referring to was last year, we knew a 10-position cut was coming.
Yeah.
We had the vacancies.
Yeah.
We weren't going to hire someone to turn around and lay them off.
Right, right.
So there was that in the mix for the vast majority of last year.
Yeah.
But yes, we will proceed and make sure we're continuing to hire.
Okay.
Yeah, and those are new vacancies, correct?
Yeah, new vacancies. Again, the average salary and sort of salary range for landscapers?
With benefits, I'm going to guess mid-50s.
Similar to custodial?
Uh huh.
In the ballpark. I think slightly higher.
So I know it's, I'm sure, an apples to oranges comparison, but in talking about custodians, there were four, I forget what the term was, but sort of four folks at the top for 593 positions. And here, we talk about four folks at the top for 98 positions? So what's the?
Well, there is, at the school site, you also have, the principal has a key role in that day-to-day operation of the custodial staff.
Yeah.
Which you don't have with landscape.
With landscapers.
If you were to look back at custodial, would see that supervisory number was bigger in previous years when it was centralized.
Yeah.
I think there's that and the fact that it's a different kind of job. The crews are roving crews, we're moving from place to place. That supervisor, even if you just look at that footprint that they're trying to tend to, it's a pretty big job to keep everybody moving, keep all the balls in the air.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I could take a moment. There are essentially a lead person at every school in custodial.
Yeah.
Where in landscape, that isn't the case. The lead is for, you know, you have three leads for a quarter of the school district, you know, you know, 1,000, what, acres of space? So it's a little different animal.
3,200 acres is what we showed on the slide. And I'm just quick mathing it here. But everything has been at a square footage level in the presentations that I've seen so far. So my guess is that 3,200 acres is close to a million, 150 million square feet, is my math right?
About five square miles.
It's over our head.
It's a lot. He needs to say it's a lot.
If I can kind of jump in on that, setting up with those big numbers. One thing we don't often keep in mind in a district like San Diego, we are a year-round growth climate. All the metrics are developed nationwide. So if you consider a district in New York, they go down for the winter. And they're repairing equipment and doing painting, that kind of thing. We grow year-round here. My experience in my former life was that in a year-round growth climate, you would have about 25 acres per custodian. And that presents a different, little bit of a different light on it in that sense.
Yeah, I appreciate, I mean, and Jim made a good, and the sort of national metrics, they're not, to me, very helpful because we're talking about very different, you know, situations. And we're not talking about what's the actual need. We're just saying what they're doing. Jim's point is, yeah, but what do the schools look like? So, yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Good job.
Okay.
Maintenance.
Maintenance. See if we can break a record right here, right? Good afternoon, distinguished board members, Superintendent Kova, Dr. Meyer, Mr. Stover. Thank you for the opportunity to represent the professional maintenance team I work with each day to you this afternoon. I begin the maintenance story with a description of the physical plant we maintain.
I'm not going to begin with a poem.
Thought about it, thought about it. But I'm going to do that by the numbers. 207 sites on property, district properties, 3,200 acres, thousands of buildings that sum up to 14.8 million square feet. But I would also bring your attention to, there's a range of students served here. It's from the kindergartner that use low fixtures and small playground equipment, all the way up to the high school senior that uses a full-size football field and track for sports, as well as a science lab to do experiments. So the picture I'm trying to illustrate here is our facilities are vast and varied to match the students we serve. And maintenance and services are needed to operate well, providing the best learning opportunities in a safe environment. Moving to the next slide, the table shows the current year maintenance budget and actual costs for the previous two years. I bring your attention to and note the fixed costs of the utilities and the general fund. Last year, the actual cost of utilities reflect favorable rates and a temperate climate. This year's budget may not be so lucky. As you may recall, the beginning of school was a very warm week, and we actually had two critical peak pricing events the first week of school. So that could impact that. Moving on to the restricted general fund section, this shows how maintenance has preserved funds during these trying times with a 20 FTE reduction, as well as managing major maintenance priorities. And again, it's not reflected in this table, but the current year actuals will be in line with the previous year's actuals. And having this preservation of funds occur has prompted conversations between the CFO, the superintendent, and there's been, that conversation after the budget was adopted this year. And so there's going to be a reapportionment for future maintenance out of this. And again, in the short term, what it means is the preservation of funds that have occurred will fund future maintenance. So let me introduce, let me introduce you the maintenance team.
And the general fund restricted, the fund you're talking about is primarily the state school facilities fund, is that correct?
Correct.
Which is depleting every year.
Correct.
How much do we have left in that? How many?
160 million, I think what Tom was referring to is, we've had a plan, our general plan was 25 million of state school facilities went into the maintenance pot. The last two years, we haven't spent that amount, knowing that that, for, really for two reasons. Knowing that that fund was depleting, also knowing that from the broader district perspective, they needed to show a large cash balance. So we have intentionally underspent that $25 million the last two years and intend to do it again this year. What it's doing for us is buying another year of maintenance at the end of the line, where we thought, and I get my numbers or my dates messed up, where we thought we'd probably run out of state schools in 1314. Ideally, this buys us another year of about 15, 16 million dollars in state schools for maintenance.
Our budget right now calls for it to be depleted in 1415.
So the super people, I don't know if you noticed Superman go across the screen there, but the super people of maintenance respond to support the site or district emergency from the major events like the power outage that we experienced on September 9th, to the everyday plumbing needs of our sites. The maintenance team also plans work, does the repairs and preventive maintenance, as well as small construction projects. Our professional staff can do it all, from the rooftops to the underground utilities with great skill and experience. We continue to improve as well. Maintenance has connected better to its customers by setting up maintenance teams in zones and providing more ownership and communication. While previous to zones, maintenance work was not the main event, it was construction. We know now that maintenance is really important, and so more than ever, we're focusing our skills on that end to maintain the sites. To sum up this introduction, maintenance can fix it all, keep the classrooms safe and the power on as long as SD Genie is providing it to us. And now I'll turn over the presentation to my colleague, Mr. Ted Doughty.
Thanks, Tom. Good afternoon. Tom's giving you kind of a broad brush view of our background and what we can do. This list gets a little bit more specific. And you can see by this list that we've got a wide range of abilities, abilities to maintain and replace things such as our parking lots, our sidewalks, painting our buildings, from installing and maintaining educational technology to ensuring that our safety systems are working efficiently. Safety systems such as fire alarm, security alarm, camera systems, EA systems. It's important to note that while these activities, such as ensuring adequate and functioning lighting systems support our Williams Act mandates, others provide cost savings, such as our centralized energy utility program. I think you saw that on that slide about some of the differences, not only environmental, but also as that program, being able to shut down, turn on systems from a central location, monitor those temperatures in the classroom. Ultimately, while many of these tasks and abilities can be seen to protect our buildings, protect those assets from deterioration and damage, it's got to be stated that these activities and other programs like our safety compliance office help ensure that our students and staff are housed in an environment where education can be safely and comfortably conducted. Just like any other program, we have had our successes and we have our challenges. You've heard many of the panel members here this morning speak to the success of the zone concept and the reorganization that occurred there. We've seen two significant events from that. One is the customer satisfaction survey. We send out periodically a survey to the school sites. They let us know where we're doing well and where we need work. One of those points that continues to show high marks and continual improvement is that communication connection with the school site. The ability for a site administrator or BSS to know who that supervisor is that is specifically responsible for their school site is huge. We take a lot of pride in that connection and be able to respond. A lot of it, we may not be there today, but if they know when we're going to be there, what our plan of action is, that goes a long way. It also allows our craft people in the zone reorganization to focus on a quarter of the district rather than running all over. district rather than running all over. They become intimately familiar with those school sites. And again, this feeds right back into the Williams. They continue to get good scores on those, not fair, not poor, but good scores. We even get some exemplaries here and there. We do know, challenging that, challenge side of it, that we see an increased backlog. Do know that our buildings continue to age. We do know that we're no different than any other program. We face funding challenges. You hear us using state school facilities. We also understand that the state has waived the 3% mandatory contribution to restricted maintenance. We understand that and appreciate the ability that affords the board to put money where it deems is most necessary. We also know, though, that with the deployment of I-21, with the deployment of new air conditioning systems, that we are seeing an uptick of new equipment and new installations that we're being asked to maintain, as well as the buildings are continuing to age. So that's one of the challenges that we're facing. Just some simple metrics here. We are in the median, and again, we've already talked about the council of great city schools and what that means and how varied those districts' facilities are across the nation. And yet we are in the mean as far as the cost per square foot. With our utilities unit, though, we are in the top 25% in the nation. We see real benefits from that group and from our central controls and able to control our utility costs. And I think that will continue to pay benefits in the future as we roll out more and more air conditioning throughout the district with Prop S. In conclusion, we have a huge facility. We have a very complex group of buildings and one of the largest owners of facilities in the county. It's a complex system of infrastructure woven together to provide an environment that specializes education, really excel at that. When things work well, you'll see your maintenance team remaining in the background. We like it that way, but we also like to be able, when that pipe breaks, like recently there's been a rash of copper theft, when we show up in the morning and the water's running over the street, we get that water up and running. It's an immediate impact to education. When the lights don't work, when the toilets don't flush, love and excel at being able to get out there and fix it. We continue to provide great service with the tools we're provided, yet we also understand that we have to put off some of the work for another day. Understand that we have that backlog building. We've seen, mostly with our FPC partners, that they're having to put off some of their work that they'd like to do now. So we also go into this doing the best we can with an understanding that in the future, we're going to have to get to those repairs, that maintenance eventually, and it's probably going to cost more then than it is now.
Would you, what's the estimate for what the repair backlog is right now, dollar amount?
Well, we would put our FCA calculation with a $750 million backlog of work.
Seven-hundred-and-fifty million.
And I think as Ted was alluding to, some of that, a big portion of that will be captured in the whole-site modernizations of Prop S. It's just the timing and when we get there.
Do you have a sense of how much won't get captured by whole-site modernization?
Prop S in total resolves about $500 million of that, between straightforward whole-site modernizations and then when you go in and air condition a school, there's a lot of repairs that you have to do to make the building Title 24, energy efficient compliant. So between the two, it's about $500 million.
Oh, on the utilities, do you know how much that is electricity versus water? Or if you can find out?
Electricity bill runs 13 or 14 million.
Okay.
And that's definitely a range because the weather is a huge impact on that.
And again, this budget is a budget that we've put together for you that reflects the dollars that these gentlemen manage. You won't see this in a, in a school district budget looking like this because utilities is actually budgeted somewhere else. But we've put it all together so you can see the scope of expenditures managed by each one of these three departments. And again, we're working towards aligning the budget process with the operational process because that's the only way they can really be held accountable for it.
Thank you, guys. Excellent. Good. Do you have time for transportation? How about we do, do you want to, oh, let's call up a couple of our speakers who I think wanted to speak.
Thank you.
So let's go Glenn Degler and Dan Ortiz and Ethel Larkins.
Good afternoon, President Barrera, board members, Superintendent Kova. I just have a few words, a few comments. I want you to know that, it shows here that we're only, we've only lost 10 positions or 20 positions over the last few years. I want you to know that's an increase of, we lost a lot of positions over the last few years, over the SERP and everything else. We've added members that were on the general budget, like the energy management people who we now switched over, all right, onto the maintenance dollars, all right, which was more cost-effective. We couldn't lose those people. They were actually generating money for the district, all right? So we need to look at all of that, right? Because we are down people. We need the 17 or the 15 positions that we have open in maintenance right now. The refrigeration mechanic, the planner-estimator inspectors, the scheduler, the electricians. We know that we're the front line out there. We're having trouble, we gave you a PowerPoint a few years back, right, that told you that we could change the fixture, but we couldn't change the light bulb. We've gotten creative, all right? We've put together the ballot program, thanks to these gentlemen up here and some of the other planner-estimators and those, the coordinators, to use Prop MM or Prop S money, all right, the project-type money, so that we could do whole-site renovations and that kind of stuff, so that we would have less bulbs to change over the years. So I have to take my hat off to them for working with us, right? But there are still places that we need to improve on, where, like out at Spreckles, right, where the switchgear, instead of changing the switchgear out, right, we have to build a shade structure over it. Or out at Dana, when we have to, the roof leaks, right, where we need to do a whole roof, all right, instead of repairing the schools and the carpet and everything else year after year after year. We're supposed to have 3% of the general budget, right, in order to do maintenance, right? Well, when we don't put that forward money into it, right, it ends up costing us more in the end. I know the general budget's hurting right now, right? But if we don't do the big whole-site renovations and the things that we need to do on a scheduled seven-year cycle or whatever they are, all right, it ends up costing us more money in the end, all right? So I would like you to look at that. The PowerPoint that Ted Doughty and Tom Wright gave you, it's about a year and a half or a year, two years ago now, all right, that was dead-on, and it's still true to this day, all right? So I thank you very much.
Thanks, Glenn. Can I just add that question about vacancies? So how many vacancies do we have in maintenance right now?
Between the support service and the maintenance side, I think there's just under 15.
Okay.
Out there, I can give you the exact number.
And again, we are in the process of trying to fill those vacancies.
Yes.
Okay.
As you well know, a lot of times it's a promotional opportunity, so it's like a revolving door.
Yeah.
Constantly.
Okay. Okay. Ethel and Dan, did you want to speak now? Are you going to go after?
These guys are done.
We still have transportation.
Yeah.
All right. We'll do after transportation.
Would you prefer to do, FPC is here and they can continue the facilities concept.
Okay, we'll see that, yeah.
Let's do FPC. Leave?
Because I was going to suggest we do transportation when we bring the whole thing to the board, transportation, it kind of fits in.
I think the transportation discussion will end up being more than 13 minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Good afternoon, President Barrera, Superintendent Kova, Deputy Superintendent Meyer, Deputy Superintendent Stover, members of the board. I'd like to introduce my staff. To my right here, George Harris is manager of contracts, compliance. Gary Stanford, to my left, is director of project management. Jim Watts, director of special projects. And Don Webb, director of construction management. You could flip to the first slide, please. Oh, I have the pointer. I have the clicker. As you can see, FPC operations does not impact the general fund for FY 11, '12. The work we do addressing capital facilities needs helps relieve the strain on the general fund because we replace older buildings that require costly maintenance, use more energy, et cetera. You can see, this is only our operational budget. Our capital outlay will be presented on November 1st. That's 140 million on top of what you see here. In terms of the general fund in FY 09, '10 and '10, '11, we had some actuals, 48,843 and 68,560. Those are, those unrestricted salaries are teacher, basically teacher moves pursuant to their bargaining agreement. And they have to be paid out of the general fund, which is ultimately reimbursed by property management. But the capital facilities funds are not allowed, not allowed to have direct educational charges to those funds. And likewise, in '9, '10 and '10, '11, on the non-salary line, where we had 38,788 and 42,000 actuals, those were phone charges. And in this fiscal year, we have changed our budgeting structure to charge those directly to Prop S. And finally, there's a $72,000 line, the GFR expense in '9, '10, and that's PPO, MRR work that was designed and managed by FPC. On the other funds line you see there, the other funds include Proposition S, state school facilities funds, redevelopment funds and property management. We're really a project-based organization, so our cost and staffing levels adjust year to year depending on the number and size of projects managed at any one time. Our implementation plan adjusts year to year also, depending on the available bond proceeds. And, you know, annually, the board approves, well, they've approved a prioritization and an annual schedule of projects, and they authorize adjustments to that schedule on a yearly basis. And that adjustment to the overall schedule really triggers the changes in our operational budget, and we have a fairly flexible operational plan. And in fact, last year, the board, we had larger-than-expected bond issuance. We issued $200 million worth of bonds because the state authorized the issuance of 40-year bonds. So we accelerated some projects. And so, of course, we adjusted our staff upward to accommodate for that. We also get state matching funds. To date, we've received about $30 million. Our total proceeds are about $407 million. We had a reorganization effort that we worked on with Deputy Superintendent Stover to improve the efficiency and integration with PPO and provide more synergistic planning. And that resulted in some staffing changes. And you can see right from the slide of the 96 budgeted FTEs, about 79 are filled, and the difference is really, you know, basically adjusting our staff to the reorganization. We also have other fund, non-salary budgets, which include legal and contracted services, auto expenses, rental equipment, advertising, postage. I'll just shift gears into, I was going to give you a little personal story, but I know we're running short on time here, so I'll just stick.
Right, but it involves a lot.
No, no. Phil asked me to tell you a little, you know, I'll stick to the script here. We, studies indicate that better facilities environment, including natural lighting, indoor air quality, thermal comfort, acoustics, improve attendance and academic achievement. And really, our purpose is to design and construct clean, safe, environmentally-friendly facilities that encourage successful teaching and learning. You can see that there's a broad range of departmental functions that are required to complete these complicated projects. That's shown on this slide. And this slide kind of gives you a sort of the overall big-picture statistics. So we've got 121 active projects with a total budget of about 650 million. 67 are in design, 54 in construction, 18 completed. And then we've got the I-21 program where we've already implemented over 2,500 fully functional 21st century technology classrooms. We've got 878 scheduled to be completed this year. We've, our current plan is to award about 121 million in this fiscal year and expend 145 million. However, that was based on our last August projection of a $140 million bond sale. Those, right now, we're working with our financial advisors. You may have received a memo from Ron Little about issues related to our capacity to bond. We think that we may be, we may, we're relatively confident that we'll be able to issue bonds this year, but we think it's going to be a lower number. And so that, in that case, we will have to adjust the overall schedule, probably stick to the prioritization plan, but adjust the overall schedule. And also, we'll be adjusting our staffing levels and our support operational costs based on that schedule. We have, we are audited, we have two audits a year. We have a full-time ICOC overseeing our activities, and we provide regular updates to the stakeholders. In fact, I was at two cluster group meetings last night. Let's see. Okay, here it goes. We've developed some key performance indicators for, with, in conjunction with Superintendent Kova and Deputy Superintendent Stover. Really, the key points here are our change order rates are really low. We're doing a lot of, spending a lot of time QA QC-ing the documents before they are bid out. Also, the other thing I'm really proud of is our emerging business participation right now. We're meeting the, we improved our goals. We're more ambitious this year, and we're beating those ambitious goals so far in the fiscal year, although it's still early. It just started July 1st. And also, sort of overall picture of our overhead versus operations, our program management office, which is really our, you know, sort of overhead versus our total capital expenditures, right now, we're about 10%, which is right in the, right in the good range there. I guess, I guess finally, you know, for this, for the sake of this meeting, we have very little impact on the general fund, and we're here to improve the efficiency of the whole school district and the operations of the district.
Actually, Ethel and Dan, did you guys want to speak to, speak to this now? No? Okay, Scott?
No, I don't have anything.
So the, most of the budget comes from Prop S, but is there a concern about the degree to which some of the, some of your budget league comes from state school facilities as well?
We, Superintendent Kova now manages that fund very tightly, and we are only using it for critical projects that are approved by Superintendent Kova. And so the size and scope of those projects has greatly diminished over this last couple of years. We're really just, and then there are a couple specific projects that were approved by the board, of course, that utilize that fund. But we're not, our goal is not to try to hit that fund too hard in terms of costs.
Okay. Okay. Great. That was, you guys get the award.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Lee Dolgeroff was the most concise presenter. Point this. So the speakers that I had called up, again, were Ethel, Dan, Larry and Al Castello, but I know Larry and Al wanted to speak to transportation when we do that, so we'll just, okay. All right, good. Well, we are adjourned for now. Thanks, thanks, guys. Yeah. Oh, Larry, yeah.
This one, like the.
Oh, yeah. Hold on just one second.
If you don't mind, I'd just like to talk about landscape just a little bit.
Okay.
What happens when you reduce, and I was involved here at San Diego Unified School District when landscape was reduced to 25. What happened is that the investment you've made in plants and trees over a long period of time just dries up and dies. That's basically what happens. And you lose, an investment that you've already made just disappears. Then you have parents complaining about what their schools look like, why the weeds are waist-higher in their schoolyards or just outside the fence. Why at Oak Park Elementary, where I live very close to, and I pick up kids there, they walk on. walk on dirt to climb into my bus today because of what happened in the past, and they haven't been able to regrow the grass in that strip right by the cafeteria there. Those are the kind of things that happen when you cut landscape. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Larry. Thank you. Okay. We're adjourned.
Hey, Richard. Yeah, I was in the bathroom. Okay. Part of this was about transportation. Transportation's not coming back? We're done for the day, or this is it?
This is it for today. We'll do transportation at a later date.
Okay.
And warehouse and distribution.
Okay. Because Albert left to go drive his bus, and I was going to give his little speech, but if they're coming back, I mean, we'll do it another time. I can come back.
Well, why don't we do it when we do transportation?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay. And the distribution part also?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right.
Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Ethel.
Reschedule, reschedule, reschedule. I can't keep doing this.
Yeah. Okay. Well, go ahead, if you want to make your comments, yeah.
First of all, I know the budget is really tight everywhere. And one of the things, and a couple of things I just wanted to talk about, in distribution, I've been there for 36 years. I've been through several superintendents. I've seen this whole school district go down the tubes, year after year after year. I've seen those losing people, good people. And these are just some of the things I want to talk about. First of all, I fought for five years, and you've been here and seen me fight for five years to get that paper back into the district to save us some money. At other departments, we're taking money from our district, all the supplies that we used to have. I want to know where the money is and the savings is that we have been getting from bringing that paper back to this district. Where is that money going? I've heard several different things. I've heard it's going towards wages for people. You can't guarantee wages from something like that from purchasing a product from school sites doing that. I'd like to know if that is being done, or if it's being spent on wages. My intent for having the paper come back was to help our department. PPO has talked about how they go ahead, and they go ahead, and they do the repairs, and they charge sites and everything. And it comes back to the PPO department to help them get their new equipment and stuff like that. We have trucks that service every one of the schools and every department. PPO, everything, Ed Center, everywhere. We don't have the money to re, to buy the new trucks, to take care of that stuff. We always come up, we have an old fleet. Yeah, we do. We do everything. We pick up the old furniture for another department, which when they tell, have the auction and sell those, and sell that furniture, where does that money go to? Does it go to part of our department? No, it does not. Everything we do is more as a free service to this district. And I'd like to see something done, either through grants. I sat here last time, and I just heard that the police force, $10 million or whatever, were getting grants. We never have grants at our department because they're always saying, we can't get a grant because we don't actually deal with the students. Far from it. Where do you get your books? Where do you get your paper? Where do you get every bit of your supply, your students' chairs, everything? We affect every department in this school district. And yet, we can't get a grant written up to help us to get some money because I've seen, I see grants come through for big-screen TVs, cell phones, everything else. I see things come through our department all the time. I've seen things that are ridiculously bought, purchased, that I sit there and I go crazy when I see it. Because we can't even get enough money. We've had computers for four years in our department. In the purchasing department, they've had three different computers in the last four years in their departments. Something's wrong here. Why is one department getting the luxuries and everything else? Why are they getting creeps in pay? I have a couple other comments, and then I'll stop. Proposition S, Proposition I-21, Proposition M, all the propositions. Everybody gets these propositions passed. How are you going to get the supplies there? There's nothing financed for somebody to handle that material through our department. We need to be figured in. We need, we're like the, you can't see us. We're invisible. It's a, it gets there. How? We do it. Come see our department, see what we do. Everybody says, oh, you guys do a great job. You work your tails off. Yeah, we do. Injuries and stuff like that? We got transferred out of our own supply room. There's no heat in our even lounge. We can't even be comfortable for a few minutes. We sit with these doors open all day because these trucks are coming in. We freeze all winter, and we burn up all summer. But you can't even go and sit in the lounge because there's no heat. We don't have a sink in there. Been asking for it for months. The PPO says, yeah, we put our preferences. Well, go in the bathroom and wash your dishes in the bathroom next to the urinals and the toilets. That's unsafe and unhealthy. I'd like to see that taken care of immediately. Also, we also have, besides that, there was one of the things I was going to say is that health and safety issues come through our department, take a look and see some of the issues. I've got my iPad here. I've got pictures of things that need to be, need to be taken care of and need to be serviced. Get a PPO person up there and take care of some of the small issues that they say there aren't important. Metal bent up with a case of paper sitting on top of it to take care of, that's been in there for about a week or two. Somebody comes by, you talk about health and safety and injuries of people having. Come by and scratch your leg on that, scar your leg, having to have that tetanus shot or something like that. Old forklifts, stuff like that, old equipment. We need to be updated along with everybody else because we can't supply you people with the demand that's coming to us. I-21 needs their stuff out there tomorrow because they have to install it. I understand that. And I understand the need for our services, but you've got to work with us and give us the finances to take care of our departments. And don't go to somebody else in another department and ask what we need. Because I've seen blowers installed in that department that don't even get turned on. They've been there for 10 years or above. No one was asked, ask the workers. Don't go to somebody in a higher position and say, this is what you need. Excuse me. Ask us. Ask us what we need. Come to us. Have us in, I mean, not my head or my supervisor, ask the individuals what they need, not higher-ups. Because we end up getting stuff that we can't even use half the time. We're, right now, been working almost a year and trying to getting our old computer things and stuff. It's just, I'd like to see a little more coming down to the workers' level. Come down and ask the workers what they need. And that's every department that I've seen and heard here. Come to the worker level. Don't necessarily ask the higher-up what they need, ask us what we would like to have. Thank you.
All right. Thanks a lot. Yep. Okay.
Hi, guys. This is a first. I'm excited it might be on television. I'm speaking on behalf of a federal community school. I didn't know I was going to be separate and first, I'm a little nervous, but I'm speaking on, I've been athletic director there and in charge of the sports program for years. We're excited. We're going to try to extend it to a K-12. Reason I'm really excited because of all the extracurricular stuff we've been doing with the kids, and our principal, our CEO's been very supportive with the sports programs especially. So, I've coached high school in the past, so I'm just, want to express my enthusiasm that if we did get to a high school, as well as an elementary school, especially in our neighborhood, that we can expose those kids to sports and make them more well-rounded students. So, that's it.
Terrific. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Nope. You're very clear. Thanks. Okay. Can we get a, I guess, do we need a motion to, yeah, let's get a motion to adopt the agenda?
We're going to move the way to adopt the agenda.
All right. Can we get your vote? All right. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. It would be all over. I'd be very confused. All right. Let's go to, so, item D2, sorry. Can we just start this with a motion in a second, and then we'll get our public comment?
D1.
Correct. D1.
Second.
Okay. So, this is a motion to adopt the charter school special education MOU with a variety of charter schools. So, any further discussion on this? If not, please vote. Okay, great. So, sorry, D2 is now O'Farrell, so can we get a motion?
With approval? Second.
Okay. And we've got some speakers on this. So, Brian Rainey, Olivia Silva, Brian Schmidt, and Susan Bond. And if we could limit it to a minute apiece, that would be great.
Hi, I'm Brian Rainey. I'm the ninth-grade family leader at O'Farrell Community School, and I just wanted to show my support for the extension of the O'Farrell Charter onto a K-12 school. We provide a very high quality of education in the neighborhood, and we've been doing that for quite some time. We're now expanding, we want to expand to K-12. Specifically, I work with the ninth grade, that we've been doing this last year, and expanding that to 12th grade. Our test scores were very, very good this last year. It went really well. Parents are very excited. In fact, this year, we have conferences with all parents that we teach their children, and they're begging us to open up next year, and we say, you know, we can't do that. But they're very excited about this and looking forward to another choice in the neighborhood.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Olivia Silva, and I thank you guys for having me today. Just to kind of piggyback off of what Brian was saying, is the very unique aspect of O'Farrell is that we have this relational piece with our families. And so, in some of our grades, our teachers are tracking with them from seventh to eighth, and so, those relationships are just really strengthened and fortified. And I think it's just really key for the children because every year in a traditional school, they're just moving from teacher to teacher, and this, I think the relationships kind of give, kind of accountability to some of the students to want to continue to be good academically, behaviorally, so that they can, you know, show their home-based teacher, their homeroom teacher, you know, that they're really trying, and they're trying to succeed. And, you know, the nice thing about O'Farrell, too, is that all of our policies and expectations are school-wide, so the kids are getting the same thing and are expected to have the same thing every year, so.
Great, thank you. Thanks a lot.
My name is Brian Schmidt. Thank you for the opportunity. I've been at O'Farrell Community School since 2004, and I've seen a lot of changes there in the last eight years. Most of them good. First five years, I think I received four pink slip, had a chance to go, was offered jobs at other schools, but chose to stay there because I believe in some of the strong characteristics that my previous coworkers had spoken about. One of which I believe in wholeheartedly is the relationship factor that Ms. Silva spoke about. The most successful kids at our school are the ones who continue to stay there. Their test scores rise, their character builds. I've seen it year in and year out, and that's why I believe in it and stay there. And I think if we do extend to a K-12, it's only going to serve the community and our students even further. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Brian.
Good afternoon. My name's Susan Bond, and I thank you for having me here. I'd just like to speak on behalf, I'm a strong supporter of O'Farrell and our program there. I've been there 13 years as a teacher, and I, we focus on college and provide an excellent opportunity for the students to express themselves, and we teach the whole child. One thing I want to be able to tell my parents as I submit with them in sixth grade is that I want to look them through the eye and say, I can guarantee you, by the time you graduate high school here, you will be able to meet the A-through-G requirements. And I also do not want to have to lose time in the transition from elementary to middle school. So, I can keep going on and on. We have the dream, we have the drive, we have the resources. We need your approval now. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Susan. Okay. Any questions or comments? Dr. Evans?
Just a couple of questions. Look through the material. Ninth grade was already previously approved, is that correct? But, the 10th grade will not, the ninth grade was there last year, so there's going to be, there's a year in between before starting on the 10th grade then, right? So, there's a little bit of a gap there. Is that correct? Okay. I mean, in terms of not being able to go straight through. And what's the number of students who are in the ninth grade right now?
110.
110. Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Barnett? Nope. Okay. With no further discussion, please vote. Okay. Great. Motion is approved. Okay, on to item D3. This is the public hearing for new charter school, San Diego Global Vision Academy Middle School. Superintendent?
Thank you, President Brown. I'm going to ask Mrs. Gary to come up to provide background, and then on to the discussion.
Good afternoon, trustees and superintendent. This is a public hearing only. There is no action at this time. San Diego Global Vision Academy Middle School plans to enroll students from, mostly from the existing San Diego Global Vision Academy Elementary. Both schools would be operated by the same nonprofit public benefit corporation and will have the same governing board. Two of the seats of the governing board will be parent representatives who are democratically elected. The school voluntarily elected to follow that path. San Diego Global Vision Academy Middle School proposes to operate at the 3430 School Street, formerly the Adams Annex, which is where the Global Vision Academy Elementary is currently located. Global Vision Middle School proposes to serve grades six through eight, summarized in your board docs, documents. And again, this is only a public hearing, so no action at this time. Thank you.
Okay. We've got some speakers. Why don't we listen to the speakers, and then any questions or comments? Janelle Godfrey, Amy Wilson. Go ahead, please. Yes.
Good afternoon, Board President, distinguished members of the board, superintendent, and members of the charter office, teachers, parents, and students. My name is Janelle Godfrey. I'm the Director of Development at San Diego Global Vision Academy. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts with you today in support of the new charter school, San Diego Global Vision Academy Middle School. There are many parents, students, and staff members present today who would like to encourage you, the board, to approve the new charter. Building on the success of our elementary school this year with an API of 810, our parents have urged us to expand into a middle school. We believe that our students would be best served by a middle school that continued to carry the vision of developing civic-minded leaders and accomplished writers and adding a component that fosters interdisciplinary thinking in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, also known as STEM, to prepare students for the rigorous demands of high school, college, and the workforce. SDGVA Middle School will expose students to high-quality, rigorous curriculum that establishes a foundation for training in STEM-related occupations. We have the students, parents, and staff who are prepared to continue the success of SDGVA. And I'd like to introduce Margaret Mercer, our Business Operations Director.
Great, thank you.
Hi, Margaret Mercer. I'm here to talk business. First day of operations started with a substantial 92 students. We steadily grew to 104 at P1 and ended the year with 119 students. Currently, we have 179 students. Our little school almost doubled in a year. The population consisted of 78 students who were economically disadvantaged, 82 students came from program improvement schools, and 100 were came from program improvement schools, and 100 were racial minorities. They scored an amazing API of 810 our first year of operation. Extended hours, Saturday school, and resilient students, families, and teachers proved to be a successful formula. Our student survey, our parent surveys showed 98% satisfactory. We ended an extremely challenging fiscal year with over $350,000 in reserve. It's a lot to brag about. The parents are here to support us, and we want to continue it through the middle school. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Wilson, Eva Castillo, and Lisa Berlanga.
Good afternoon. My name is Amy Wilson. I'm the board president of SDGVA Elementary. I have a third and a fifth grader in the school, and this is their second year there. I was here the last time to help support the petition for the elementary school. My family and my kids were very happy and appreciative of SDGVA's success in academics and operations, so much so that we feel the need for the middle school in order for all of the kids involved to continue their success in education. We, the parents of SDGVA, support the middle school charter for the simple facts that we believe in this school, the vision, and the academic excellence that has already been proven throughout the elementary school. And we'd be delighted to have our children get the next level of education through the same values that has been made, that has made our children academically successful. I can't wait to come back to you the next time in order to support the charter for the high school in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Evangelina Castillo.
Good afternoon. I will be interpreting for Ms. Castillo. Her name is Evangelina Castillo.
Soy madre de cinco maravillosos niños, pero por los cuales solo quiero abogarse por tres de ellos.
I'm a mother of five marvelous students, but I only want to advocate today for three of them.
And sus compañeros de clase.
And for their classmates.
Necesito, antes que cualquier otra cosa, necesito agradecer por permitirnos tener nuestra nueva escuela, San Diego Global Vision.
First off, I would like to thank you for allowing us to have our new school, San Diego Global Vision.
Estoy muy orgullosa de ello.
I'm very proud of it.
Donde nos sentimos como una verdadera familia, de la cual nos encantaría seguir siendo partícipes.
It is a place where we feel like a true family of which we would like to continue participating, in which we would like to continue participating.
Quisiera hacer mi petición, que fuera posible que agregaran otros dos grados más para que mi niño del seis y los otros que quedan pudieran seguir asistiendo con esos maravillosos maestros que están ahí.
I would like to ask you to extend the school by two more grades so that my student and the other students in sixth grade can continue attending with the marvelous teachers that they have there.
Que están preparados tanto, ¿cómo se dice? Preparados.
Who are well-prepared.
Preparados y son magníficas personas, de las cuales tengo mucha experiencia ya conociéndolos.
Because they are very well-prepared people, and they're magnificent people whom I've known for a while.
Son humanitarios y están preparados, y ellos pueden conseguir más personas preparadas para la nueva escuela, para los nuevos grados.
They're humanitarian, they're well-prepared, and they can find other people who are also well-prepared for the new grades.
Ay, gracias. Por favor.
All right. Please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And my children.
Para ti.
All right.
Gracias.
Good afternoon. President Barrera, Superintendent Koba, board members. Lisa Berlanga, California Charter Schools Association. I am thrilled to be standing up here today to advocate on behalf of San Diego Global Visions Middle School. These ladies are the epitome of what it takes to open up a charter school today. They have the passion and the tenacity and just the pure will to make things happen. Last year was a challenging fiscal year for all of us, and these ladies committed to this school and worked for minimum wage for the first six months of the year so that they could get their school open. So when I have new petitioners come to me and say, I want to open a charter school, I have them talk to these guys, because this is what it takes to open a charter school. Takes passion, takes commitment, takes tenacity. And on top of all of that, in this really challenging school year, they got 810 on the API their first year out of the gate. That is absolutely amazing. They have a new focus for their middle school. They're going to continue their writing focus, but they're going to really focus on STEM, so they have science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And I can't wait to see what they do with their students. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Lisa. Yep. Mr. Barnett?
Mr. Gary, I just had a question. We obviously just had the item before this when we were talking about extending grades at existing charter, and now this is talking about creating a new charter for middle school seven and eight on the same site.
Mm-hmm. What's the difference? The difference is the petitioners themselves. O'Farrell chose to go the route of materially revising. It's basically an amendment to their charter, whereas Global Visions pursued a path of a whole new charter, which requires a public hearing and action. So it's basically the path that the petitioners elect to pursue. It may open up different possibilities in terms of funding or whatnot, so that may be different, the reason why they pursue different paths.
Oh, because you would get first couple of your funding, which you wouldn't get if you expand?
Traditionally, there's been grant funding from the state for developing charter petition. In this case, the public charter school grant program has been put on hold, so it's not clear that money's going to be available or not. But there's a possibility, and that may be a reason why some petitioners pursue that path. And if they're already existing, they could materially revise their charter.
I mean, it seems to me, and maybe we can talk to the petitioners, that it would make more sense, certainly from our perspective, if they were the one charter. But I don't know whether that's something they would want to consider or not. I realize there's also, you'd fill the current term. When was the current one approved, the elementary?
I believe the previous charter would come up for renewal in three years, and this charter, they're proposing to align it to the other charter, so it would align with the three-year term. We did have a conversation with the petitioners prior to the amendment, just to make sure exactly to raise that issue, and they did indicate to us they were clear, they did want to pursue a new charter. But we did broach the issue, the subject with the petitioners.
Maybe I could ask a question of the president of the board or the director. It's the director, because of her beautiful baby, obviously is very distracting, but is a better salesperson because of that. No, I'm either one. I just would like to just hear your thinking a little bit more on a new charter on the same site versus a, expanding the existing school, and what are the pluses and minuses from your perspective?
Well, we have decided, Janelle Godfrey, we have talked about that, and we decided to go the route of creating a new charter for two purposes. We wanted to add the component of the STEM emphasis on top of the writing and the service learning component that we have for the elementary school, but also for the public charter school grant funding that we're hoping to get. So those were the two reasons.
Because the STEM, I assume, could be incorporated into expanding the existing one if you wanted to, but the grant, so it's really the opportunity for the financial resources, which wouldn't be there if you expanded it.
Correct.
Is the primary.
Correct. Did you want to add anything?
No, that, no. The STEM focus.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Evans?
I just wanted to ask, what's the location of the school currently?
They're proposing the Adams Annex, 3430 School Lane, I believe. And just on that, Moises, do you anticipate that when the school is, you know, fully has all its students for going through middle school, the new middle school, is the facility going to be big enough to accommodate both schools, or is there going to be, you know, a facilities issue at some point?
At this point, we're really bringing forward the charter petition itself, because at that point, that's more of a, I don't know if they're going to pursue a Prop 39 process, or they might pursue a different type of multi-year process. So there may be an issue in terms of the capacity of the site at the Adams Annex, just based that particular.
And maybe, Ms. Godfrey, how many additional students, oh, I'm sorry, with the new school, how many students would you have, and what's the, you know, the existing capacity at Adams Avenue, I guess is the question.
The capacity at Adams Avenue will be able to sustain the middle school if, once we're there fully. So not to share the campus with the elementary school, but just strictly be the six, seven, eight.
So, oh, so the Adams Annex would only be able to accommodate the middle school, so then you'd need a new site for the elementary school.
Correct. At full capacity. Right. And right now, we have some Prop 39 classrooms with Adams Elementary, and so we're hoping to apply for that process again this year.
Okay. 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 All right. Any further questions or comments? No? Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks, Moises. Okay. Let's do item C2, our HR update. I guess, Mr. Jackson, did you want to?
Lamont, why don't you come up there, and we'll try to tag-team this a little bit? I think stemming from last week's business meeting, there was concern and discussion about where we, the district was relative to staffing and to health benefit coverage, especially as it impacted on teachers who had been laid off but may have been called back, substitutes, and the expiration of coverage as of the 30th of September. So with that in mind, we thought that after some discussion with some of the trustees, it might be very helpful to outline the issues in a public, a very brief public presentation. So I asked that Mr. Jackson and Mr. Reinderson put together a group of slides here to highlight where we are, and there's a few of them that bring up the staffing issue first, and at the end, we discuss the healthcare coverage. So I thought we would do that very quickly.
Great. Thank you.
So the first slide that we put together is a slide that we presented last week. Just to report out that we have 574 classified members still in laid-off status and 466 certificated staff members. We believe that this number is going to decrease based on the information that we're receiving from school sites. Last count, we had about eight schools that we needed to collect information so that we could begin the final staffing process this afternoon and later this evening.
Okay. Do you have any ability right now to estimate?
I anticipated that question. Unfortunately, my answer is no. I don't have that, simply because we were compiling all of the information. I would say within the next hour to two, I would be able to have some numbers for us as we do the analysis of the number of final vacancies and the number of excess teachers and the number of teachers that we're going to need to recall in each subject area.
Okay. And do you anticipate any changes in the classified numbers?
At this time, we don't anticipate too many at this time.
Yeah. Okay.
Actually, I can say I anticipate one, because there was a request for approval just before I stepped into the meeting, so I can give you that.
Okay.
Here we go. Just to review, our post-in-bid process for this year ran from, moved from May to July based on the budget impact. The final budget adopted here pushed us to look at having our July post-in-bid rather than May post-in-bid. We agree with SDA for that. The final enrollment numbers came in that showed a drop by over 1,700 students, and this impacted our staffing for this year and pushed our timeline back a little bit or forward. So the final allocations went out to the school sites on the 28th. The final staffing, we anticipate will be concluded over the next week, this week and into early next week. And these are determined by, the final staffing will be determined, again, by the excess teachers and the final recall numbers. And again, we're starting that process this afternoon, later this evening, and we're still waiting for data from a few school sites. And I don't see the number of excess that would preclude us from not getting into the recall list, so I do anticipate, as I said earlier, that we would see a number of teachers recalled, so.
And we're waiting for information back from eight schools?
That was the last count, yes. What we needed from the schools were the excess numbers. So school sites that were dropping in enrollment needed to submit the number of excess teachers that they were, or reduction in staff. In addition, we were asking for their final vacancies based on the final enrollment and including position numbers, so that did take us a little bit of time to get that. But we're hopeful that this afternoon, we can do our analysis and begin to call folks who could be recalled.
Okay.
Once we do that analysis, then we will, based on the impacts and effects language, work to really get people back to their school sites and maintain some consistency there. From that stage, we'll focus on staffing our QEIA schools so that we can get, you know, make sure we're in compliance, and then we will staff the remaining school sites.
Okay. Okay.
So we're still waiting for information, and again, the staffing process will follow the collective bargaining agreement, the education code, make sure that we're matching up credentialing, and with respect to the declining enrollment, make sure that we are getting the number of teachers to each school and utilizing our excess teacher pool.
Just a question, Mr. Jackson.
Yes, sir.
Just, I want to just reiterate what you said, that basically, as long as I understand it correctly, the reason that we've had a delay during the month of September in terms of really determining who's going to be in what position, is first of all due to the postponement of the post-in-bid.
I wouldn't say necessarily postponement of the post-in-bid. The reality is with the budget reductions, with transportation, a number of things impacted the final enrollment. So we weren't quite sure where students were going to end up. Certainly, parents decided that they would continue to transport students once they got into the reality. Maybe they made a different decision, and so student enrollment did shift around the district. In addition, the anticipation was that we would hit our low-range projection. Unfortunately, we lost, as indicated, more than 1,700 students. And so with that shift, that poses some difficulties with really identifying the final numbers. We typically use the Fourth Friday as final numbers, but with direction of the board and the superintendent, and also our belief that we needed to try to solidify the staffing for our students as quickly as possible, we went with the Third Friday. So there are a number of factors that didn't necessarily all fall on the July post-in-bid.
And so then, once this is, maybe they're getting to that, but once this is all completed, we'll be able to see the final situation in terms of how many, not only who was left on a laid-off status, but in terms of if there were people hired from outside, what is the reason that they were hired and how everybody's been allocated.
Yes. We're going to track all of, we have been tracking, as the first slide showed, how we were filling vacancies, the number of excess folks that ended up moving at this late of date, and also the final recall numbers. We will be able to show that. In addition, we'll also show final excess numbers in terms of what I would say overages because of credential matching or mismatch in this case.
Okay.
And this is a staffing timeline that I sent out to all staff, all the certificated staff, and just gave an overview to give people an update as to where we were and what it looked like over the next two weeks. And the feedback from this document was very positive, as folks were getting anxious about their status, particularly the folks who are still on the layoff list or the recall list, and wanted to know when we would make some final decisions. In addition, school sites needed information. And so we thought it was beneficial to put a timeline together, and we sent this out to all of the certificated staff members, the board members, and also SDA representatives so that they could also help us communicate to our staff members as well. In addition, we thought this was very important to get out in terms of payroll, making sure that those folks who were on the recall list were reminded that they would not have an impact to their financial situation if they were recalled, and that would go back to the first day that they started service with us this year, regardless if that was in a recalled position or a visiting teacher position. In addition, I thought it was important to communicate the board's decision and superintendent's direction to support the continuation of benefits for those. direction to support the continuation of benefits for those staff members who came in and were in a recall status, but also were in visiting status, extending those benefits through the September 30th date that we initially had, so that our teachers were not impacted because of the circumstances that surround the budget and the staffing.
Just, I have, not just related, Mr. Jackson. I understand first that, you know, the substitutes, the teachers' replacements, substitute positions at the beginning of the year, because you couldn't say for sure exactly how many positions and what positions we needed during the first week of school. So that was buying some time. But I guess on the academic side, that's Dr. Meyer. It seemed like what the situation is going to be, which is lamentable, but is that after a month in school, there are going to be a lot of shifting of classes, because some schools have increased and some decreased, and we can't hire any more than we absolutely can afford. And so I'm just imagining in a high school English class or something, that position will be eliminated and students will be shuffled to different classes?
Yes. We know that out of the 1,700 enrollment drop, that approximately 1,100 came from our high school campuses. So as a result, the 1,100 will have that reduction in staff at the high school campus sites. And so they will have to reshuffle their master schedules, make some classes larger, look at reorganizing as much as possible. We also know that the other remaining sites, that we are looking at some ways to alleviate some of the combo classes in the early elementary years. So we have been working with Finance and Human Resources to look for solutions within the context of the staffing that we have. And we may have some teachers that we have that are currently hired that will need placements. So we're balancing that.
So I've had concerns, and I've raised the concerns with the superintendent, that a factor in our enrollment decline might be that our front office staff in the schools are so, you know, stressed and stretched that we have kids who, in a sense, are falling through the cracks, that we're not, that we've got documentation issues, you know, that might be going on. And I know that, you know, you've talked to the staff about that and looked into that. Could you give us maybe just a quick update, Superintendent, on kind of that level of analysis? And what I would also say is, I had a, you know, a conversation about this with Sylvia Alvarez, who I see here, you know, with OTBS. I think there might be some perspective from the frontline workers that might, it might be productive for us to reach out to Sylvia and OTBS and have a conversation about what are they seeing in terms of the potential that there are some documentation issues that are, you know, factoring into our enrollment drop?
If there are any documentation discrepancies, we'd certainly like to see them. I've spoken to the area superintendent, Sintinelli, and I know they've worked through the principals to iteratively and repeatedly over the four weeks of September to validate the enrollment, to go looking for the 1,700 decline. We've asked, we've done the hot body counts, where we physically view each of the students. We've run it, reconciled the number of times to enrollment and attendance documentation, and obviously trying to separate between the two because they are different. I know that Daryl Agass and his pupil accounting staff have also been working with the schools to confirm enrollment numbers. To this point in time, we haven't been able to find any significant, discrepant documents that had to be researched. And we've gone through, we separate the numbers between preschool, special ed, general ed, across the three grade groupings of elementary, middle, and high. We've actually got anecdotal information from, I would say, the area supps on any neighborhood movements and migrations. But that said, if there are some document discrepancies whereby there are more or fewer kids in enrollment, I mean, I'm prepared to take those on and to validate, but I haven't seen any.
We have this T-DAP deadline coming up. Is it this Friday?
Yes.
Yes.
Actually, last day for proof is Thursday.
Last day for proof for T-DAP is Thursday. And as I understand it, we are, if we don't receive proof of vaccination, then we are not allowed to have the child attend school? Is that the result?
On Friday morning, no proof, no access.
And approximately, how many do we still have outstanding? If there's any way of guessing that right now? I know the last number was a couple of weeks old, so.
I couldn't tell you right now exactly what that number is, but because it's becoming so fluid. In fact, when I was out at Marimesa High School yesterday, we talked about it at length. And they were at one number, which was less than what the county health records. The last number I saw, I think, was somewhere in the 5,000 range. But that is lagging information. And just two and a half weeks ago, it was about 16,000.
Right.
So our trouble is the moving target of the information. But again, this morning or overnight, you would have seen email between Dr. Foulcher and the area supps and the principals. It's kind of a, and we're assigning clinics right up to the last minute where we find that there are strategic student concentrations.
And my, obviously, the concern is if it gets to a point that certain parents, for whatever reason, either don't get their booster or just don't get the documentation for it. And unfortunately, there's been a lot of false information about some other vaccinations out there in the public airwaves the last month or so, which might frighten people overall. So I guess, how does that, I guess, we will have affected our staffing by then, but we could end up having a shortage, a reduction of students. I mean, it's hard to believe that every single one is going to do it. I hope they do, but, you know, realistically. So is there any estimate or projection that we're making in keeping that as part of our projection in order to know the fact that we could, that could affect our staffing needs?
Well, once we have our final staffing, then we have to move on those numbers. If the enrollment declines, decreases based on the T-DAP and that situation, that would not impact staffing. It would impact our ADA, but it would not impact our staffing at that point.
And I can just share that with, like the TB vaccination, we try and get the vaccination or the waiver as soon as possible. So it would be, hopefully, a loss for a few days, not something that would affect our overall staffing.
And just to be clear, they either have to be vaccinated or the parent has to sign a form stating that they have an objection to vaccinations?
Yeah. It's either a document indicating vaccination or a belief exemption form, which says, my family's values, so on and so forth, are such that I'm not authorizing my child for the vaccination, but they should be enrolled in the school. And that's per the law.
And I know this isn't on the agenda, but obviously, certain vaccinations, the risk to students are greater, or certain conditions or diseases or viruses or whatever have greater risk to a broader public than others if not getting vaccinated. But you're saying under the law, if someone decides not to get their child vaccinated, in this particular case, even because of the large increase of cases, we would have no option but to submit the child to the school?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. And we have a couple of non-agenda. Thanks. Okay. Two non-agenda item speakers, Jo Ellen, Archer, and Becky Breedlove. One minute. Yes.
Okay. Then I can't talk to both. All right. You know where I live and everything? First of all, immunizations. I have been trained, shouldn't have been, as a side tech, so I can print the SDR form. Don't know how to input them. We have one nurse, one day a week. There are 16 that are not inputted yet. So on Friday, you probably aren't going to have those 16 verified that they're, I have some copies of the immunizations. I have some that the parents have not responded back to us. That's like half our student population at ALBA. Also, I think what you need to do with attendance is you should have been looking at who rode the bus last year and who has not enrolled at that school that rode the bus last year and see if your busing affected that. You're not finding out why you have less. You're just looking. I went through on my lunch hour, I don't have but 30 minutes, just the main ones. Could not go with the Gates McGinty, the four or the six. And between that of 10:01, 10, which is the Fourth Friday last year, and 9:30, 11, which is the Fourth Friday this year, I only found 795. Now, maybe your higher number comes from San Diego High, Kearney, and Crawford area. I don't know, because I didn't have time on my lunch hour to do any more. But I can do a lot of things just back and forth, so I can't imagine IT or some of your others could not be giving you this information. And this is the information you need to move forward, whether you're going to do busing, to move forward how you're losing the kids. If you keep just going around saying, "Oh, we're losing the kids," you're not finding out the answers.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, just briefly. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Becky, go ahead. Yeah.
My name is Becky Breedlove, and I live at the same address. Two or three things. Number one, I want to commend the board for looking at the Prop S funding issue and tabling that till you get more information about transportation and how that might affect schools. I would think, I would hope that when we, all is said and done, and we see where people are when schools are closing and what changes people will make in their children's lives, then maybe we'll be able to look at some of that on a case-by-case basis rather than coming up with a formula that will maybe fit all. Secondly, I've been thinking a lot, and I emailed Phil Stover and Sheila Jackson this morning after the presentation last night at the Crawford Cluster about the notion last week about how we're going to get this information about transportation. So I think I have kind of a creative idea that won't cost very much money. It won't involve postcards, won't involve stamps, won't involve things that maybe are not real efficient. And I volunteered myself to help with any of that in any way I can. Thirdly, I'm concerned about the meeting, oh, did I, how many minutes did I get?
Go ahead. You get one.
Okay. One more thing. Of course, we love the notion last night, we heard that at this moment, the recommendation from the Committee on Closure is to not close any of the schools in the Crawford Cluster. However, the notion that Crawford High School, again, may be turned into a comprehensive high school concerns me. It concerns other people, and we look forward to, we don't look forward to it, to tell you the truth. We do not look forward to talking to our community once again about this issue, but we will do that as charged, and you will see us and you will hear our rationale for why a comprehensive high school on that campus is not best for our kids. And I want to know what happens to the CDS codes, because I think when you close a school, I mean, when you lose a CDS code, in my mind, that's closing a school. And I don't know what happens with base numbers and APIs and API growths from that moment forward. And I think the only example we have is MAND. So I'll be asking more questions and seeing you next week.
All right. Thanks, Becky.
What was the creative idea, Superintendent?
She emailed Phil. Phil now, too. Go ahead. Superintendent.
I emailed, yeah. He was a busy district supervisor. He was sloppy in Spanish. That was amazing. Yeah.
Stover spoke, was trilingual at Boyloma last night. At least, I believe it was Mandarin he was speaking. I can't verify it or not.
Superintendent.
I, two points. I just wanted to comment on the attendance again and ask if maybe Joe could, Dr. Foulcher could come up to provide an update on T-DAP. There were some questions by trustees, Joe, about where we were with our numbers and some of the last couple of days, what we're doing. I mentioned about the clinics. Before I get to Joe, I just wanted to comment on the attendance issue. We have a Fourth Friday report that Bernie will be consolidating input. And this year, because of the troubling 1,700, even though I gave you just some observations, we actually got the area supps that went principal by principal, school by school. And in some cases, we'll show you some information where X number of families moved out of the neighborhood, there were Y one or two foreclosures. They tried to get down into some real specifics as to why here, why this particular campus. And let's see how that plays itself. At the same time, I could tell you that the demographer is looking at, and going back, looking at his data and his assessments as his pupil accounting. So I think there's more to follow. We're not at the end of this story yet on the attendance and the enrollment, I'm sorry. Joe, if you could.
Sure. Thanks. And quickly, we have about 80,000 secondary students in our district. And at present, there's about 5,500, about 5,500 of them who have yet to turn in any proof of vaccinations for T-DAP. So over the next couple of days, today at Madison, tomorrow in this very auditorium, we'll be offering free clinics to the remaining students. And we've sent out communications to principals, vice principals, and central office staff, telling them about the clinics and giving them a plan of action for the next three days. The exclusion day is Friday, on October 7th. If you haven't turned in your proof of vaccination or consent to get vaccinated or bring in some documentation that you have an appointment for your vaccination, you will be excluded from school. Now, I spoke with districts throughout the state, most recently in the Sweetwater School District. Of course, their kids were excluded who hadn't provided evidence about three weeks ago. They started school a little before we did. And there were about 1,200 kids who didn't submit any evidence of the vaccination. And within a couple of days of the exclusion, all but one student had gone out and gotten their vaccination. So we're encouraged by the numbers. The Nursing and Wellness Office has done a tremendous job, but we still have a ways to go. And we're going to work hard for the next two or three days to make sure we can ensure 100% compliance.
Okay.
And Joe, do you have, I think, some roving nurse coverage to get to schools, to cover where they are, to keep asking about what's going on?
Yeah. And those, and that roving team is contingent upon a few things, but primarily what's happening at the school site. And at some sites, we have still about 200 to 300 students who need to be vaccinated. And those schools that have a pretty high number, a pretty significant number of students yet to be vaccinated, will be, we'll be sending our roving team of nurses there to do the vaccinations for those eligible students.
You may not have this at the top of your head, but do you happen to know traditionally how many students, their parents opt out for religious exemptions or whatever?
I don't know.
Just kind of interested.
But we have sent information to the principals on what needs to happen for the personal belief exemptions as well. What we're doing for those kids who bring back some appointment schedule or bring back the consent, we're handling those as medical exemptions. So even though they haven't been vaccinated, we're going to let them remain in school and get them squared away probably within the first two weeks after the exclusion period begins. I couldn't tell you right off the top of my head how many, though, normally apply for the personal belief exemptions. If you need that information, I'll be happy to try and find it for you.
I just wanted to stump you.
Well, you did.
Okay. Thank you. Just be interested.
Okay.
Good night.
Thanks. Thanks, Joe. Okay. We're adjourned to closed session.[1777.22]